Recording in progress.
Call to order the Tuesday, August eighth, Town Council's special meeting to order at six thirty-one. Counselor, Kent Clark and Kousher.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have Counselor Bordelon. She's here. Franco?
Here.
Jacome? Jones?
Here.
McBride?
Here.
Parker?
Here.
Westervelt?
Westervelt, here.
And Melinda?
Here.
Eight. You have a full quorum. And then some.
Everyone will please rise for the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Onto new business, we have Town Council vacancy due to the resignation of Counselor Melinda Cassiri. So I will open nominations.
I'd like to nominate Dan Gajewski.
Okay, I have a nomination for Dan Gajewski. Doesn't technically need a second, but I have a second. Any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, I'll close nominations. So we vote in order of nomination. Uh, yes.
So, there was only one name that was put forward, which was the name that was put on the floor. The prospective counselor did reach out. There were no other names that were ever given. There were no meetings that were held or to discuss, so I was a little torn as to how to move forward because usually in the past, there's been some form of proper dialect within the party or within the council, some type of caucus, and there's been none of that. So, but with that, I feel very comfortable voting tonight for Dan Gajewski. I was just determining if I should abstain or not. But I will say that two years ago, when I was faced with a primary, Dan Gajewski did stand up and vote for me on the floor at the committee and supported me when everyone else did not. And had even stated that it probably wasn't the best idea to even have the primary. So with that, I will support Dan Gajewski tonight because he supported me two years ago and works to try to build bridges versus, you know, create barriers. And my hope is that he truly comes on and is part of, you know, true democracy and thinks with his own thoughts and minds. And finds a way where he's able to work collaboratively with everybody and their differences. And that is my hope, and he showed me that a couple of years ago, and that's why I will be voting for him tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jacome?
Thank you, Mayor. No, I'll just say quick, and I think being the only name on the floor, but while me knowing him, he's a very intelligent individual, capable, and knows a lot of our community, and he's a very active volunteer. So for that, I thank him and for volunteering for this vacancy, and I think he will do great, and he has my support. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so seeing no further discussion, I will call for a vote on the nomination of, or the appointment of Dan Gajewski. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? carries unanimously eight in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Clark and Kousher, are we gonna do this?
Yes, I will.
Does she have a microphone? Betsy? Betsy, do you have a microphone?
I'm loud enough, though. So, your right hand, so do you promise to uphold the Connecticut State Constitution, the Town Charter for the Town of Groton, and the rules that pertain to your Town Council, the Thirty-third Town Council, the best of you can?
I do.
There you go. You are in. And I will send paperwork to the Secretary of State's office, which is required within ten days of your election.
Shall we take a moment for recess?
We'll recess.
I'll interchain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, second.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Franco. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We are adjourned at six thirty-seven.
I'm good. I'm good.
A call to order the Tuesday, August eighth, twenty twenty-three. Town Council Committee, the whole, Special Committee, the whole to order at six thirty-eight. All councils are present. That is a quorum of nine. Calendar communications, Counselor Gajewski.
Last Thursday, I had the opportunity to attend a legislative update from our state representatives, Christine Conley and Andre Bumgardner. Anthony Nolan also joined them. He's the state rep in New London. They discussed the great legislation they've passed up in Hartford, some things that are gonna be coming to Groton, and I look forward to working with them in the future. And thank you to all my fellow new counselors for allowing me to fill the vacancy left by Counselor Cassiri. And I thank Counselor Cassiri for her service.
Thank you. Counselor Parker?
First off, welcome. Thank you. Thank you. I attended a couple of meetings with TVCCA. I do want to announce that they, there is a news article that they did pass. Planning and zoning did a special permit for them on July eleventh. They're hoping for the next special permit at the next meeting in September, and they thank the Town of Groton for their continued cooperation during this childcare center procedure. Also want to note that Deb Monahan will be leaving soon. We are in the process of looking for her replacement, and there will be a special event in September twenty-eighth. I will get that information to the Town Council. Second is, we have, the applications will be opening up September first for heating assistance, so that news will be, like I said, September first, and I should have a flyer for that coming from them. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Counselor Franco?
Thank you. I, um, attended the greatly anticipated Donmar groundbreaking up at the old William Sealy School for the Triton Square, which will have three hundred and four new apartments in Groton, along with a wealth of amenities. Sounds like it's going to be a very spectacular apartment complex. I attended National Night Out, which was hosted by the Groton Town Police Department, and it was wonderful night. A lot of smiling faces and wonderful people were there. I also attended Groton City Day, in which I did see Counselor Parker there. Actually, she was working. Which was also another wonderful community event that numerous residents were at, and it was a wonderful event where there were numerous children and children's activities, and it was a wonderful, wonderful day. So, that's it for now. I also received numerous communications and spoke to a lot of residents in Groton this past week as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also attended along with now Counselor Gajewski, and thank you for, congratulations, the legislative update last week with Representatives Nolan, Conley, and Bumgardner. Good conversations. Weren't a lot of people there, but we were able to have some good conversations. Attended on Friday, the sixty-fifth anniversary in celebration of the USS Nautilus going under the North Pole. What was kind of special with this one was that there were five remaining, I don't know if the remaining, how many there really are, but there are five sailors who had been on that sub, and so lots of stories and honoring of them. I attended, along with Counselor Franco, the National Night Out, and then also the Triton Square opening, which is an exciting new apartment unit that's being built here in Groton. And I just wanted to read something, some nice presentations that were done at that, at the opening, the groundbreaking for this new, new building. And the two brothers that are gonna be managing the project, Tony Jayoya, I'm not sure I'm pronouncing his name right, but he said some very kind words about Groton, and I think it's just worth sort of repeating them. So this is what he had said in his remarks. "First and foremost, I want to express my profound gratitude to the exceptional town staff of Groton. Their unwavering commitment to their vision of Groton is unparalleled, and their diligent efforts in propelling Groton forward step by step. The planning staff and economic development staff, led by John Reiner and Paige Bronk, are among the finest in our state. Their department epitomizes remarkable talent and unquestionable expertise, as evidenced by Deb Jones, the planner spearheading Triton Square." So I just thought that was a really nice thing for a developer to say, recognizing the people they've been working with over the last year or two years or something, I don't know exactly how long they've been doing it, but it was just nice to hear it and nice to hear things we already know about our town staff. So, thank you for that.
Thank you. Counselor McBride?
Thank you. Numerous emails and correspondence that all the counselors receive. Also received additional emails and questions regarding the property reuse, and what, if anything, can be done to put some of the work that was done by that group into the document that was approved by the council to try to get a little more information into that document. Also, some questions on the stormwater authority and where this council stands with looking into moving forward with that. Also reviewing the pilot spreadsheet that the team is working on regarding the public, public safety, the use of the pilot, pilot funds for fire districts. Also working with several members of the Groton Low Point community on development of a short-term rental plan there, trying to dig in and see what can be done in that area, trying to address some of the issues that, that that's providing in that area. That's all I have to report.
Thank you. Counselor Bordelon?
Thank you. Congratulations to Dan Gajewski on your new seat, and I look forward to working with you in a collaborative fashion. I received some communications about light ordinance. I thought we reported about National Night Out at the last meeting, but I too attended and spoke at the last meeting stating that I did attend. And I did agree with Counselor Franco when she stated at the last meeting that it'd be great if maybe it was started later or something, that way we could attend or earlier, or some way that we didn't have a conflict with our meeting, so we could, you know, stay longer. I think that's a great idea. I did receive some emails about apartment cost. I was saddened that I was not able to attend the groundbreaking of the new development, but I did receive a lot of people speaking out saying that they're concerned with the high cost of this development. That development had come out a while back, and I remember on the council, you know, speaking up about looking at ways to have mixed income as an option. Unfortunately, with that development, it was not, and it was not something that was put into our RFPs at the time. So, it is exciting, but for certain sections of town, folks are feeling the need for more affordable housing. So it's kind of a balance, and, but, you know, welcome to the new complex that's coming, that had their first groundbreaking. I received some communication about an email that went out from Economic Development to developers as a teaser email asking, you know, letting them know about properties that were coming online. Some people reached out asking, how do you get on that list? How come some got it? Did others get it? And I, so I did reach out to John, and he did send me an email with how that process works, so I thank him for that. I also did receive something, I think all the counselors did, regarding concern. I don't know if, John, is that one gonna be referred to the Safety Committee, or?
No, that, that's handled internally.
Internally? Okay, so we don't do anything with that one? Okay. Didn't know what that one would do. And I also too attended on Friday the celebration of the Nautilus, you know, making the journey through the North Pole, Panapo, the sixty-fifth anniversary. As it was stated, there were five sailors that served during that time on that boat when it hit the North Pole, as well as many of their family members. One in particular that stood out to me, who has become a friend now, and actually has been texting quite frequently and sending pictures back and forth, was a lady whose father served. His name was Thomas Emanuel. He was from New York City, and a school is named after him. And one of the things that she had stated to me is that she believes, if not only, he may be the only minority that served on that boat, possibly. I'm not a hundred percent on that. But that was just interesting artifact, because at that time, minorities were not on submarines at that point, or were not allowed to serve in great length. So, it was just a really awesome presentation, and, and I look forward to it every year, and I hope to go next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Westervelt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too received lots of the same communications that the other counselors have already spoken of. And I also attended the Panapo presentation and memorial ceremony. It was really a lot of fun. Actually saw some old friends of mine, and I just really enjoyed being there. It was a great event, so I'm glad I was able to be there. And I salute the men who are still here that, that did that, and those that have passed before us.
Thank you. Counselor Jacome?
Thank you, Mayor. A lot of, many of the similar communications. Thank you.
Thank you. I too participated in the sixty-fifth anniversary of the Panapo. It was a very interesting event. I got to meet a lot of people, hear a lot of great stories, and learn a lot about the history of, of that historic event, really. I was able to present the proclamation on behalf of the council, so I was honored to do that. And, yeah, I hope they, I hope they do that regularly. Perhaps they'll do it every five years, but I hope they do it even more frequently than that. And congratulations, Counselor Gajewski. Although you are very young, your service to this town has, has been, been long, longer than mine, for sure. You got interested very young, and I think that's, that's amazing. I think you should inspire some current high schoolers to get out there and, and, and get involved, because, you know, a few years down the line, they could be sitting here right where you're sitting now. So, thank you for, for what you've done for this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for those kind comments, and thank you to the fellow counselors who shared those same comments.
Thank you. Okay, onto the approval of minutes. I'll make a motion to approve the July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes. So move.
Second.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Parker. Seeing no discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Okay, so that carries seven in favor, zero opposed, two abstaining. Jacome Gajewski, that passes. Onto new business. Light pollution ordinance. And we have Chief D'Assaro here. So, this referral was originated from Counselor Bordelon to discuss a potential drafting of a light pollution ordinance. So would you like to introduce your topic?
Yeah, so, you know, since, I don't know if it's been about a year possibly, there's been a resident of Groton, Kelly Poulsen, who's come before the council many times, speaking about light trespass. I know that the law, you know, our town cops have gone down and inquired and tried to see, and the town manager has sent many correspondences. For me, it's just, you know, when people come, and, you know, I feel like it's my duty to make sure, if I think there should be a light ordinance or not, it's, it's fair to give it air. And we have not had a chance to have it fully discussed, other than through public comment. So my, my hope is tonight that we have a chance to kind of look at what other states are having, what that may look like. Is it something that works good for us? You know, I did some research, and I wanted to thank the town manager when I was pulling my papers last minute to get here. In fact, I, some of the stuff I pulled was the same. John says, I think we have the same stuff, so it was actually very helpful. So, the stuff that I've read, you know, there is some concerns, you know, when you start looking at highways and airports and different areas where people live, residential neighborhoods, things like that. So, I'm excited to have the discussion today, and I think this could help us to, I mean, do I think today we're gonna solve it? No. I think this is a starting point for discussion, and I think it should get some air. Thank you.
Do you maybe want me just to give a little bit from the agenda item on kind of what we have in place now, et cetera?
Sure.
Just for the benefit of at least the people that don't have this packet. Just kind of part of the reasoning, you might want excessive light pollution ordinance is, you know, a lot of materials have been sent by the constituent who's visited here. But light pollution can potentially create sleeplessness, obesity, depression, and some diseases. It can additionally affect biodiversity and impact the climate through the use of fossil fuels. In terms of what we already have now, the, we do have some regulations through zoning. Anywhere where a site plan or special permit is, is required, for instance, an apartment complex, there are, there are policies in place, ordinances, regulations, not ordinance, regulations in place that dictate what could be there. Things exempted from those rules are single and two-unit dwellings. And then things like traditional seasonal lighting, temporary lighting, some of those type of things, emergency services. And in terms of, the chief will go into this, but in terms of, the police department do have a mechanism to address light pollution in their current arsenal, and he will touch on that.
Sure. So a couple of weeks ago, I came here and talked to you about a similar ordinance. I will tell you that we have had multiple noise complaints in the Town of Groton in the last several years. We've done extensive research through our in-house records management system. I asked our records department to look and see what we've had for complaints about light. We've had one person complain about light ordinance, looking for a light ordinance, or looking for, you know, complaining to the police department about this issue. I would submit to you that this is a more involved issue than just lights. I would submit to you, there's a neighborhood problem. I provided the, the town manager, I know he's been passed on to, to council members in the past, some memos outlining some of those concerns and some of those issues. I've gone out there myself. Our officers, since the beginning of twenty twenty, have been dispatched to about two hundred and four calls on, on Laurelwood, which I think is where this, this question emanates from. Not all of those have been specific to this issue. There was, you know, about a dozen or so medical complaints, but we've, our officers at my direction have gone there and conducted numerous patrol checks over the last three years, which are available right here. We've, we've gone there multiple times. I've gone out there myself. There was, at one point in time, a couple of years ago, an issue between two neighbors, where one of the neighbors was, in fact, shining a light directly onto their residents across the street. After meeting with that person and telling them there could be consequences, we conferred with the state's attorney's office, I authored a memo about this, that, that individual found it in their best interest to remove that light. There are neighbors that fly the colors in their yards, veterans. As you know, they're, if you're flying a, if you're flying the colors at night, you have to have a light on it. That's, that's etiquette, that's protocol. None of those seem to be excessive. None of those seem to be problematic, yet the issue persists. According to our records management system, we haven't been called there since February for, for any issues relating to this. We've been called for other things. You, you have been provided information about some ongoing neighbor disputes. I, I would, I would caution the council to start, to, to not jump to conclusions and enact ordinances for every person that comes here. We have state laws that we're able to enforce, and we've done that. I talked about that two weeks ago. Many of the same laws apply. If, if there's a neighbor dispute between people, we try to resolve that. We've had multiple officers respond to address some of these issues to no avail. We've had our community outreach specialists try to address some of these issues to no avail. I, I'm having a tough time drawing a correlation, and I, I understand, you know, environment change, all that sort of stuff, but, but some of the things that I have heard during council comments, not from the council, but, but from constituents about this issue, I, I have a, I have a hard time making the leap to some of the global impacts of one light issue on Laurelwood Road in the Town of Groton. I do think that, you know, we're, we're prepared to address issues. We're prepared to work with your constituents, our community members, people that bring things to our attention. But I'm not in favor of police enforcing what essentially, in my mind, is But I'm not in favor of police enforcing what essentially in my mind is a zoning issue. We, we have regulations. If it's something that the council sees fit to pursue further, I would, I would ask that you would make it something in the zoning regulations and you have them enforce it. And if it requires additional staff from zoning to, to, to look at this issue, I've, I've heard, you know, X amount of people living in houses, that's not something that we enforce, that's not a criminal law. You know, I, I'm also fearful that if this, again, according to our records, one person has made an issue of this and asked us to address it. It isn't an overwhelming groundswell of support from, from people across the community. Are there issues related to airports and, and we have one here in town? I haven't heard any complaints on that. Highways, certainly, but, you know, we try to resolve what the real issue is. I don't know that this would necessarily resolve the issue that, that someone hopes that it would resolve. I'm fearful that it would cause other tensions. And just like I articulated to the council a couple of weeks ago, you know, when we enact an ordinance about noise, is it going to be used? Is, is it going to be weaponized between neighbors? Is it going to put the police in the middle of that? It will on this, no doubt. Can we address it other ways? Yes. Have we tried to? We have. Have we resolved it? No. Is it going to be resolved? I think if you enact this ordinance, it still won't be resolved. I think if it's not this issue, it will be something else. And, and I, I think not just my department, not just the police department, other departments in town have dealt with similar issues that have been brought to their attention by the same constituent. I think it will be more issues and I, and I'm cautious about saying that because we want to help address these concerns. But, but enacting an ordinance about one specific complaint from one person, you know, I don't know that it's going to achieve the goals that you're hoping that it will. I'm not sure if that really addresses what, what you're looking for. I've got a whole host of information here. Again, you know, we have responded, again, at my direction, multiple patrol checks. I've directed supervisors, officers to go check this issue out. You know, it is a bit subjective, but in their assessment, there, there wasn't an issue. You know, it, what, where do we draw the line? I mean, if, if, and here's another thing. Part of what we do in police work is try to prevent crime, right? One of our major goals is to prevent crime from happening. So we have something called SEPTED, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. You know, we, I talked to you about community policing and part of our community policing role is to educate the public, how to protect yourselves, how to prevent crime. Well, many years ago, when I attended a SEPTED class about this, one of the key features of that is illumination. You know, motion detector lights. You know, if you, if you live in a residence that's, that's dark and you're afraid of burglars, you're afraid of people, you know, prowlers, people coming onto your property, that, that helps prevent that from happening because it's, people are less likely to commit a crime in an area at night that's illuminated. It's much easier to work under the cover of darkness. So are we going to send conflicting messages? And again, yeah, that's more of a holistic approach. I would hate to say, I would hate to have a situation where a neighbor puts up a motion detector light, a deer goes through their yard and all of a sudden neighbors are now complaining, hey, that light went on. Or maybe it prevented a crime from occurring. Maybe it wasn't a deer, maybe it was a burglar, what, maybe it was somebody breaking into a car. Because we have that quite often in Groton. We have stolen cars. So I'm not, I'm not sure I'm able to articulate a good reason for this ordinance for you. Obviously, as a police department, as a legislative body, if you enact laws or you enact ordinances, our duty to follow them. But this is a tough one, again, for us to enforce. I would encourage you that if you consider it important enough to enact something, that you direct it to be a zoning ordinance and that they handle this. I'm happy to answer any questions. I don't know if there's things that maybe I can cover for you, but that's just kind of my, my, you know.
Thank you.
This would definitely have a large zoning component to it. You'd have to document, if it were to go to effect, you have to document what's in place, you know, to, to see what changes need to be made. If a light was found to be doing incorrect light, you have to go back to make sure the right light's been reinstalled. It's a zoning issue. I talked to planning, they think it would take about 1.5 positions to add on, to do this. I'd even recommend rounding to two because we're overstuffed on our one position as it is. And this will of course be at night, which we don't have anyone on at night.
Thank you. Councilor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Chief, for being here today. Can you just give me the definition of what is an ordinance?
Well, it's a, it's a local law, something that you would enact.
Is it something that the police deal with when you have an ordinance? Is that?
We could.
Is often a police matter?
Sure. And I think I explained that a couple of weeks ago, how if, if there was an ordinance, that there's enforcement action that we can take through, through the state court system.
As a reminder to the council, the plastics ordinance would be a good example where we did have a zoning enforcement officer who, who takes care of that.
So sometimes an ordinance could be with police, sometimes it could be with zoning. If neighbors are having disputes between them and police is probably the first place they often go to because they don't know where else to go to, what would be your normal response when that happens?
Well, first, we send officers out, but there's two sides to every story. There's always, we know that, whether it's a domestic violence incident, a neighbor dispute, you know, a property boundary dispute, things of those nature, there's two sides to that story and, and we have to weigh them both. You know, there, as I'm looking through this, there's, we've had other counter complaints. We've had people that have made complaints about other people in that neighborhood, people that we have arrested. We've, because they were valid complaints through the strength of a warrant, warrants were submitted to the court because of complaints that came forward. And that's what we'll do. If, if, if a complaint comes through and it meets the statutory violation of a law that we enforce, we will enforce it. You know, we, we, again, two weeks ago, I came in here, talked about community policing. Part of our role is to try and mitigate those problems and resolve them without making an arrest, you know. That's what we would try to do. We would try to resolve it at the lowest level possible, try and.
Have you had, or maybe the town manager can answer this question, have we had any complaints in any other parts of the town about lighting and having light pollution onto people's property?
I heard of one, but it didn't sound especially valid. Of course, a couple of times, Craig gets one for streetlights, if anything, streetlights, which are not, would fall into this ordinance.
They're not covered.
Yeah.
And again, in our research, and I use benchmark of, of January of 2020, that's when we went on our new CAD system, we haven't, not in the police department. You know, I've asked, I asked two different people assigned to our records department to look at independently to see if they could, they did free text search, they, they went through a lot, you know, pretty exhaustive efforts in preparation for this meeting because I wanted to be able to provide you with ground truth. Hey, we've had X amount of complaints. We've, we've had complaints, but they've all been generated by one person.
So to the best of your knowledge, in the last three years, basically from 2020, when you started keeping records, we haven't had anybody really other than maybe one complain about light pollution in the town of Groton?
One.
One. One. Town manager, can you just explain? I'm just looking at page 15 in our packet and it just sort of gives the different lighting zones that we have in the town. Can, and you probably, I don't know whether you have an answer to this or not, but why were residential properties, which is lighting zone one and probably lighting zone zero, left out of any kind of, and this may be way before your time.
It's traditionally not a big issue and I think the thought of enforcing that is a bit overwhelming also.
For manpower and for definition of it.
You know, just like, you know, there's quite a lot of neighbor disputes about animals, you know, dogs often. I see the light pollution and it being kind of that type of thing also.
Okay. Do you have a sense of what is the most complaint?
Again, once there, there was one issue early on and the chief did take care of it, because there are mechanisms to take care of it.
There, you have mechanisms.
You can take it, right.
And just to reiterate that, yes, there were, I don't mean to report that there was never any problem there. You know, I went over and observed something myself one night. We addressed it the next day. We involved the court and said, hey, what, you know, what mechanism can we go through as a police department in order to compel someone to make changes? And we went down that avenue and, and those changes were made. You know, but again, the issue persists. So that was resolved, but, you know, issues persist. This person has a light on their flag. This person has these, I mean, there's ambient light there as well.
I've been in that neighborhood, I think twice in the last five days. I did one around eight o'clock and one around midnight, coming back from the movies and drove through that neighborhood just to make sure I'm prepared for this. And it's a very reasonable, fairly, it's a fairly dark neighborhood. There isn't very much light at all in there. So it's, it seems to, whatever you did, seems to have taken care of the situation or just time has taken care of the situation.
I'd, I'd like to think so, but apparently it hasn't. Because I'm here tonight to talk about a light ordinance because the issue persists and certainly in the mind of one person needs to be addressed.
And some of the complaints in the past have also been cars backing into the driveway across the street, which this would not likely, you know, cover. You couldn't possibly get out and check it that fast anyhow.
And from the best that you can tell, adding something like this would be an increase in staff that we would have to put in.
For planning, yes.
For planning, to put that on enforcement and nighttime, which will probably be overtime?
No, you would schedule, that'd be their position, they'd be, they'd be their hours. It's like you have a police officer scheduled for the evening.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Bordelon?
Thank you. Again, you know, I understand it might be one and that's great that the research was done to know that, but when a constituent as a taxpayer comes, we have, I feel as a counselor, an obligation to at least bring it forth to a table for discussion. So again, as I said at the beginning, by putting this on the floor, it wasn't necessarily meaning something that was going to necessarily go through or that I want to go through. I just want to talk about it, put it out there, allow for the dialogue to happen, allow for the constituent to feel that their, their elected officials are listening and see what their options. So my first question is to the town manager, if it is a planning thing we should talk about, we have to send another referral in or are you going to invite them at a different time or how would you?
This council should give me direction tonight if they want to continue pursuit of anything.
And we asked for planning, because I, I just didn't know why maybe we didn't bring planning on, just so they could address it from there, you know.
Just because they show, someone are staffed and one of the administrations out for a while.
Yeah, okay, all right. Thank you for clarifying that. So again, I don't feel comfortable getting into the personal disputes or personalities of any particular resident because it's really, as a counselor, not my business and what goes on in other people's yards or neighborhoods. But, and I have to driven through there and take a look. I did a while back when I first started and have since. So I appreciate the, you know, support the person is receiving on both ends. But it's, you know, great, you know, the information provided in this packet to see, you know, as it was stated, we do have a plastic ordinance and, you know, some say that's not being enforced because no one's gone back and checked and some people have gone back to plastic. So if, if there is a shortage of enforcement, I completely understand and this is probably very complex, like a noise ordinance. So, but, you know, the goal tonight was to put it towards the floor, have a discussion, which we're doing and looking at it in great detail, which I think is the right thing to do and, and make sure if it is or isn't the right thing for our town per se. If it may not be now, it doesn't mean that it's not going to be later. And because other people haven't complained, it doesn't mean that it's, it's not a problem for other people. Some people just don't feel comfortable complaining about it. But I will speak from an environmental standpoint. Again, it is a concern community wide, all over, that they're, you know, they are looking at ways to cut light along ocean, you know, areas and things like that. But is it the right time right now? Maybe it's not for us. But the problem of it being an environmental issue is a concern. Is it necessarily in that particular neighborhood? I don't know, I'm not a scientist. So I, I'm just trying to gather information and figure out, you know, where does this fit in for us? So I thank you for your comments and thank the town manager for his comments and, you know, I don't know, maybe this is something that should go to planning and just say, hey, you know, what, what do you guys see and what are you hearing? Also, we have somebody now hired from the, our sustainability. Have they weighed in? That's my last question.
No, because there's not yet been, no, there's been no complaints in the planning department, is my understanding, talking with Deb Jones, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Gieske?
Thank you, Chief, and thank you for coming this evening. Have you, has a light, or has any like light complaints come from any other towns in your communication with other chiefs or is this just a one isolated neighborhood?
I, I haven't canvassed chiefs across the state. You know, I imagine there have been somewhere. I do think there's a, I'm trying to be somewhat diplomatic on this. I think we're dealing with a different issue here that we're, you know, it's, there's, there's issues going on in that neighborhood and I think light is maybe just one of those concerns.
Okay.
I don't know if that's fair to say.
Thank you, that answers my question. And then a question of the town manager, in our council packets, we had two light ordinance provided to us as examples. One was Stanford and the other was Southbury. I believe Southbury. Were there any in New London County that, because Southbury is up towards Hartford and Stanford is a city?
I just did a keyword search.
Okay.
Looked, nothing came up when I was searching, but I was not intentionally looking for that, so I don't want to say there's not.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Westervelt?
Thank you very much. Chief, thank you for sharing that with us. I'm just curious, you said steps were taken, reaching out to the neighbors and everything and various entities within the police department have reached out to no avail. Can you tell me what to no avail means? Because I, I just don't understand.
Sure. We've responded to complaints. We've, I highlighted one where I personally observed a problem and had off, directed officers to take action on it and it was resolved. As this issue has persisted, I've assigned police officers. Police officers' responses apparently were, were not satisfactory. Supervisors were assigned, their responses were not satisfactory. Our community outreach specialist was assigned. Her actions were not satisfactory.
I don't mean to interrupt you.
Yeah.
They were not satisfactory to the.
To the person that was making the complaints to us.
Okay.
We, we do try to address these wherever they occur, whether it's this or something. And, and I will tell you, this wasn't the only type of complaint that we were receiving. There were complaints about parking, complaints about trespassing, which was not trespassing. There were complaints about, you know, animals which devolved, quite frankly, you know, people walking, animals, things. There was a whole host of things that we did try to work with certain people on in that neighborhood to make sure that we resolved the problem. You know, I, I don't, I don't dispute the fact that, you know, the light that someone experiences could be annoying. I have a next door neighbor, as I was highlighting before, has motion detector lights on his house. When an animal goes out there, the wind blows the trees, the motion detector lights go on and they shine in the window. My wife is shielded from it because it hits my side of the bed, not hers. But I accept it, right? And I close, I close my blinds if I need to, but it happens, right? But I don't know that, you know, just enacting an ordinance to say, oh, we're, we're going to eradicate this, it probably won't resolve that issue. You know, people will pull into their driveways, they're, you know, that, that's going to happen. When you live in close proximity to other people, they turn their porch lights on, you're going to see it. They pull into their cars in or people drive down the roads or, you know, the, the wind blows, you can see, you know, natural illumination for some reasons. I, I don't think it's going to resolve it. But we have, again, I have the data here, I'm happy to share it. We've, we've been to certain addresses many times in this neighborhood, many times, to conduct patrol checks, to, to noise complaints, parking violations, neighbor problems, motor vehicle accident. Patrol checks, I've got multiple pages of patrol checks, suspicious activity, well-being check, public service, which could be, could be really anything. So I, I don't want the council to think that we aren't sympathetic to this and don't respond to these kind of calls. We do. The police are limited in what we can do, right? We've, we've really tried.
I understand that and it was kind of an awkward way to ask that question just because I get the sense from you that your officers have done everything that they can do and that you're satisfied with their actions.
Absolutely, yeah.
And I guess that was probably a better question for me to have asked. So if you're satisfied with what your officers have done and you don't feel that we're going to get to a resolution in the near future, I understand that and I respect that because you guys do a great job and I appreciate it.
And I'd also kind of double down, if, if we receive a call, our officers will respond to any address.
I'm sure they will.
Today, tomorrow, whatever, you know, they will try to, some things we, you know, and you see it, sometimes people will write complaints to the council and say, hey, do you, police, you get one side of the story. You don't get the whole story and it's usually slanted in a light most favorable to the person complaining about it, right? slanted in a light most favorable to the person complaining about it, right? You know, and we conduct, we look into things, we conduct investigations. Our officers do that. When they go out and address each and every call they go to, they have to make a decision as to whether something is a violation of the law. If it's not a violation of the law, maybe they can do their, you know, some, some good community relations by trying to resolve issues between people. But if it's not a violation of the law that we can enforce, we don't, you know, we, we don't have that authority to just make things better for people that we wish we could. Sometimes we can't, you know, and that's a factor.
I understand that. Having raised my kids, one of the things we did to settle things is, instead of two stories, there's three sides to every story.
Sure.
Yours, mine, and the truth somewhere in between. So I do appreciate that, and thank you very much for all you do.
Thanks. Thank you. Counselor Borlaun?
So, you know, if it's not something that, you know, is really recommended by the town manager to go to zoning because of the cost and the manpower that we don't have, you know, and we, obviously, I'm just speaking, it's a broad issue, just to check, you know, from an environmental standpoint as a whole, just moving forward. One of the things I read online, it says it's definitely indicative to look at lights as another thing. People are looking at noise and sound and vibration. Noise, not in the clinical sense that we think of a party or downtown mystic, like, you know, a bar letting out. But vibration and stuff connects the ocean in other ways that are affecting our climate. Again, maybe it's not something right now. So if it's a personal thing, is there some way, you said the community outreach officer went out, which is great. We also have enacted the counselors. Is there any way that maybe once a month, there's some type of check-in, maybe not waiting for a call? Is there any way that we can try to kind of build some community relation down there with our counselor and our community officers?
I suppose, is this really a police issue, though? I mean, I guess that's my question. I know a few years ago, we had, we went through a whole discussion about what police should be doing and shouldn't be doing. I, I mean, I'm all about community relations. I'm all about having a good reputation in the, in the town, and our officers do exceptional work in that regard. But is, are we going to, are we going to not respond to domestic violence incidents, or try to get drunk drivers off the road, or, you know, handle all those calls for service our officers do in order to, you know, I'd love to make people feel better, but I don't know that it's necessarily a role for us. We have other organizations in the town that could.
It's just a suggestion, because we put counselors on, and when you have a sheet the size that you are stating.
Sure.
And I don't have it in front of me, with amount of calls, I see that as time taken away from doing those patrols.
Sure.
So my counteroffer thought was, you know, if this is something that maybe can be amended, it maybe would decrease the call time, open up the availability, and maybe bend. So some would say that's why we brought in counselors and community officers. If there is a downtime, perhaps that it's, it is something that could be, if you don't feel it is, that's fine. I just was thinking.
To your point, we have.
I just was thinking, you did, and I heard you say that, and I was just thinking, since you, it's taking a lot of time. There's a lot of calls that are not just light-related. Maybe there could be more times when you stop in where it's not a call, and it's just like, hey, we're in the area, just checking in, everything going good, looks like, you know, haven't, you know, haven't heard anything. How can we help you? Like, what's going on? To talk to both sides when you're doing your patrols, and, or the community officer or the counselor either. Maybe there is a counselor side of this that could be, because it helps de-escalate and prevent the call. So that's, if it's not in the purview, that's fine. I just was thinking, you know, with the new supports we put in place, it could be something.
Sure. And just to highlight something I did mention, we've done that. We've, even our community outreach specialist, not a police officer, has done that outreach, and it hasn't met with the success that we'd hoped for. There are other organizations in town that have the capability of doing that, too, beside the police. There's other resources out there that are available. Again, you know, we, you know, our job is to make Groton a safe place, a safe community to live in, to work in, to raise a family in, you know, keep our streets safe. You know, our community outreach specialists have been doing a lot of work in areas, and I said this two weeks ago, we don't know what we would have done without them. You know, this week alone, they're responding to families whose children were, you know, walked away from the house, dealing with, you know, other entities in this town, with, with resources that are available to families that are involved in domestic violence incidents. To the extent that we can, sure, yeah, absolutely. You know, community policing, getting out and talking to people. But I don't want it to be lost on the council. We've done that in this particular case. It would spend a lot of time and a lot of energy on it.
And my last remark would be, I'm not depicting, I'm not stating that you did not. I was just throwing it as a closing thing, if it was possible. Because, again, in some of the research I did, they stated, a lot of it is sometimes personally, you know, neighbor things. And one of the ways was, is how do they build that relation to decrease calls, and kind of, you know, build a sense of community where everyone feels they have their needs being met, let it be whatever violation they feel is happening. So, again, I'm glad we had the discussion today. Thank you for coming forward, and, and thank you for bringing, I mean, I didn't see them, but thank you for the, the stack, you know, of calls and explaining what, you know, has been going on, and helping us to understand. And, and again, my sole purpose was to just bring it up for discussion and see what, what's being done, and what can we do. Thank you.
I'm happy to help.
Thank you.
Mayor Burt?
Just to mention, we've utilized other departments to try to alleviate issues there, too. Public Works has done quite a bit of outreach and work in that, on that street, as well as the one owner, homeowner's attorney reached out to me. They did not want to have any dog cross into the right-of-way. So it's the only person in the town that has a small fence right up to the road.
The traffic authority did work on some stuff, too?
Yeah, yeah, traffic authority did some things also.
Counselor Giacomo?
Thank you, mayor. Yeah, I want to thank you, chief, for giving us the information. I think it's important for us to know how many calls were made in the situations, and not pertains to any one situation. But yeah, I agree that, I think there's enough there based on one individual, that we shouldn't be creating ordinance, is my opinion. While it's something important to take into consideration, there's also, you know, state statute, plus there's zoning regulations already in place, especially with future lighting, with site plans and special permits. So I think that's important to know. Thank you.
Counselor Franco?
Thank you, and thanks for coming out tonight. I don't know, I think, me personally, I think 204 calls to a resident in that much time.
I have to caution, they're not all to that.
I'm sorry, to that, that area is a lot. I think, as you've stated, there are, is a neighborhood dispute issue. And I think creating this, an ordinance of such would basically weaponize the ordinance to be a tactic to use against neighbors. And when I see one person complaining, I find it hard to bring forward an ordinance due to that. I also have driven by this, down this street, at a minimum of six, at the minimum of six times over the last year or so, since it first came to the council, a complaint. And I've driven by at night when it's dark. The street is a dark street, on the most part. I see the house that is being complained about, and, but when I look across the street, I can't even see a house number on the street because the house across the street is so dark. So I had a hard time supporting bringing this forward because I didn't see an issue that is being brought to us. I commend you for all the work that you have done in that area, and trying to alleviate the issues that are at hand. I'm basically finding out about a fence by the road on the town's easement, and I didn't know about that either, that I guess I should ask more questions because I do have concerns about that as well. And was, was there an agreement to put the fence there with the town?
Yes, there's an agreement between me and the attorney to allow it.
And so there was an agreement to put the fence there between you and the resident's attorney?
Correct, after involving Greg, of course.
And the town paid for it?
No, 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 no. They allowed them to put that little one in.
Okay, all right. All right, well, I am not in favor of the town council getting involved in neighborhood disputes. And if this was valid to where we had major issues throughout our community, I think I would be more in favor of having an in-depth thorough discussion of it. But also, I see that there is a light pollution law on the state of Connecticut, and when I read it, it is for basically, can you get, like, I see it on page 26, if anybody's interested. It's, it's when you use state or municipal funds on certain roadways or state grounds, and locating floodlights on state highways and right-of-ways in the purpose of lighting our private property. So it's about basically if you use state funding. Is, am I reading that correctly?
I believe, it's not something we would be involved in.
Right.
All right. And this, like you said, I fully agree that this is more of a planning and zoning board issue. And I thank you for coming here and explaining this to us and giving us all the information.
May I just make one more comment? Short, if there's any. I don't want to, there are ways that the police department can enforce these types of problems, much like I articulated a couple of weeks ago. You know, there is a breach of peace statute, there are creating a public disturbance. We've used that in the past. It can be enforced, but, but, again, Counselor West, there's maybe three sides to that story. So if we're, if a complaint is brought forward to the police, we take the complaint, we investigate it, we talk to the other parties involved. There may be exculpatory information that we have to use, and we can present that to the court and say, hey, do you think, here's a warrant affidavit. Do you think this is worthy of an arrest or not? And the prosecutor can say, nope. Or he can say, yep, and the judge can say, nope. So there are methods that we can do, you know, enforcement. So I don't want you to think that absent any ordinance in this regard, the police department's hands are tied. They're not. I'm not a fan of putting additional laws on the books, and we have some that we can enforce. But again, this particular issue, I think you're, you're, there's a, there's, there's other things at play here with this particular issue in this neighborhood. I think you might get some other opinions from other people that live in that neighborhood about what's going on there, my guess. I assume that you would. But I don't want you to think that we cannot enforce something. There are laws. But you have to meet the statutory threshold.
Thank you. Mayor Burt?
I know with your, with your department meetings, that you've gone over how this ordinance can be, this law can be used for noise. I don't know if you've done the same thing for lighting, but if you haven't, I would encourage, you know, make sure every officer knows that this is a tool available.
They are. They're, you know, we had a supervisor meeting today. I can't recall how much we talked about this today. But, but yes, we'll make sure that they're certainly aware of that. I've put stuff out for myself, that sometimes utilizing these statutes. And again, we don't want to jump to arresting everybody first and then figuring it out later. We'd rather look into the issue, and if it does rise to that level, if there's repeated offenses, then we do that. But we have to handle each one independently. If we get a call tonight to go out there, or officers to go out there, they'll, they'll look into it, and they'll make an independent assessment of whether it's violation of law or not.
Just a quick point of information.
A quick question.
So you stated that there was possibly other resources that could be used to handle this outside of policing. I was just curious as to, just to brainstorm, what, what other resources would you recommend to try to help, you know, to kind of do something in that area?
We've had, we've, we've done everything that we can in the police department. There's other resources that we've tried utilizing our outreach specialist to direct people towards. Really don't want to get into the specifics of that for a lot of reasons.
No, I meant like, what other outside resources? You said outside of police. You said it's really not policing issue. I was wondering if there was like a agency that we could use, or?
I'd be, yeah, I think there's other resources that are available that may help.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion?
Okay, seeing none. I don't believe I heard consensus from the council to proceed with drafting light ordinance. Mayor Burt, is that the same conclusion you reached?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, chief, for being here. We'll move on.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Thank you.
Onto employee ARPA funds date extension. We have Director Green here.
Mr. Burt, you have a paper on the floor. I didn't know if you noticed it. I didn't know, I didn't know if you noticed it.
Let me keep a tight shirt on.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Hi, how are you? So first, we have the ARPA funds date extension. So if you recall, one of the qualifying, one of the qualifying characteristics, I'll call it, for employees was that they had to be working for the town as of March 16, 2020. And we did recently process the payments for all the employees, but we did receive some feedback and another way to look at things, and being more inclusive of the employees and being that there are funds available, to extend that date out a year. COVID was still going on right around that time, a couple of months before, is when the shot became available and more accessible to folks. So this seemed like a fair ask and a fair compromise in the employees. And there is a chart attached of the funds that have been extended already by union, and what the cost would be extra. So we do support that, and I'm open for any questions.
Thank you. So I'll make a motion to recommend a resolution to approve a change to the date town of Groton employees must have been employed as of to March 30, 2021, to qualify for payment under the ARPA grant to be issued if the employee continues to work for the town at the time of issue. So moved.
Second, Franco.
Moved by Melinda, second by Franco. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I just, I want to just make sure I understand this. So the original date you had to be working was March 16, 2020. So now the date would be March 31, 2021.
21, yeah. So it's moving at a year back. It's allowing kind of the net, next batch, if you'll call, of employees to be included in that from a higher date perspective. Because the feeling is, they were here during some of the tough, tougher times, I should say, of COVID. And then you might have folks that maybe started April 1 of 2020. They're not eligible. So it covers everyone until a year out, and that felt like an appropriate date, given the availability of the shot and the ability for people to start protecting themselves in a different way.
And primarily because COVID just went on for two years. So we're catching people that are further in the, in the cycle.
Correct, yes.
Is there an end date on that? I mean, is it like between 20, March 16, 2020, and 2024?
So that would be an end date of sorts. So let's say I have an employee list, and I sorted it my date of hire. We were here for 2020, and if we go down a little bit further on the list for 2021, we capture everyone in this.
In that thing.
Block, for lack of a better word. And that would be the end date. So anybody who started, let's say, April 1 of 2021, would not be eligible.
Okay. And the whole, the additional amount is 18,250. So it isn't, it isn't a very large chunk of money.
Correct.
Do we know where that money will come from? Is it from the balance?
We already allocated it for, you're just changing the parameters, since there's money left over.
There's money left over.
And this was at the request of different collective bargaining units to try to capture a few more of these people.
And then my last question is, I'm just looking at the spreadsheet that's on page 58.
Mm-hmm.
And just wondered why the total issue is less than the total appropriated? Is it, do people leave or something?
Well, one, correct. One of the parameters is that people have to still be on the payroll when we're issuing this. So you've had people transition from that time.
Okay.
And this was an estimate at the time, which was ways back when this was all decided and voted upon.
So people left the town of Groton employment, and so they didn't qualify any logically.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Giacomo?
Thank you, mayor. So just two questions. What stops them, like, would it, with this possibility of us extending it again? For example, if they wanted to, if it wanted to be an argument that, you know, President Biden had deliberately pulled back the state of emergency that the country was under for COVID, and they wanted to make that the final date? Is that something we thought about?
This is not a negotiated item. The way this council set it up was that it was a process for folks to apply to, different groups. So the unions were asked to apply through that process. And from a decision-making perspective, yes, they could come back with some feedback. I think this is a fair compromise from where we were to where we could go. And when we're thinking about how COVID changed over time, you could keep kicking down the can, the can down the road until 20, the middle of 2022. So it's relative in the perspective of where is an appropriate cutoff. I did message this to the unions, just as an FYI. Obviously, it's not going to get every single employee in there. But not every single employee was here for the longer duration of COVID, before things started to show some signs of improvement.
Okay, thank you. And so, what are the current funds, Mr. Burt, for in ARPA?
For total?
For total.
In terms of what's not allocated currently?
Correct.
It's in, I believe it's somewhere in the 150, 160,000, somewhere in that ballpark.
Plenty of money.
And that reminds me, one thing we should, what they'd like to know from the council is, there'll still be some remaining money that had been allocated here. Do you want to release it back into that, you know, the unspent dollars back into that fund?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Gajewski?
Thank you. One quick question. How many employees currently will this affect if, when we change this policy?
This additional?
Because we have the additional dollar amounts, but I was wondering what the number of employees that this would affect.
About 25.
Okay.
23, 25.
Okay. And just to speak on the motion, personally, I was not, being a younger individual, I was in the last to go and get my COVID vaccine. And I did not get my COVID vaccine, my first shot of this dose at this date that we are proposing. And I was very COVID-conscious during that time. So I am in favor of this motion.
Thank you. Counselor Franco?
Mr. Burt, do you recall?
Mr. Burt, do you recall when we started having our meetings here at the annex?
Boy, I even, time flies, I can't even guess.
Is there anybody on the council that recalls when we came into the annex and started having our meetings? If, may I ask to the mayor if anybody can recall?
I can't remember.
Twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty-two.
Somewhere, sometime.
Twenty-two.
I bet Sean's really knows. Sean's not alone, I would know.
Is there any way to quickly?
Sean's really probably remembers because he had it all done.
Is there, the reason I ask this is because prior to that time, we were working, doing our council meetings at the senior center, and the purpose for that was so we could all stay further apart from each other. And it became a point in time where we said, all right, let's go to the annex. We can sit closer together. So my thought is, like, if we were all staying apart and trying to have distance from each other and that, I'm just wondering, is 21, should we go out further? And I thank you for bringing this to our attention. And, and I think everybody who might have brought it to your attention, because it's, it's something that I think is important as well. And I'm grateful that they brought it forward.
First meeting of October of 22.
I think, I also think the folks that brought it forward and where we can to have an open dialogue and say, okay, there is a different way to look at it. To your point about when people moved, I think some of it was a personal preference. You guys saw me here for a year, still wearing a mask after because it was my personal preference long after the shot came out and.
Right. So if there's, let me just do a little math, I'm sorry. So there'd be like 37,000 still left in this, in this distribution after it's allocated, the 18 is approximately, is that correct? Somewhere around that number.
If I can get my calculator from the bag.
Somewhere around there, somewhere around 37. And do you think if we push this date out even farther, do you have numbers that you would be able to give us a better number of how much more money that would cost?
I didn't prepare that because I didn't think it would be a conversation going that far into present day. We're coming up on the cusp of, 2022 was not that long ago. So it wasn't my thought that that was the intent of the use of the money.
Right. I'm not, I'm not specifically saying going to October of 22nd of 2022. But what I'm saying is maybe it should go further out because that was a time period. Like, if, if the vaccines were coming out in March of 21, I mean, some people weren't even getting their first shot until 22. And, I mean, there's still a very heavy time there. You know what I mean? Of, we were deep in, so even if you were, people were hired a little bit later into that year, I, I don't understand what the significant of this date is. And is there a possibility to go out further? And if we could maybe capture some more people that did work during that very difficult time?
And just to make note, we weren't staying out of this room because of COVID. The last several months it was because this room was under renovation.
Well, it was under, excuse me?
It was quite a few months that we could have.
That's what I recall. I understand that.
Yeah, I just want to make that clear, yeah.
And even when we got in here, there were people that wanted to go back to the annex because of the close distance. We were still together. There were issues still even when we came in.
And that's where it gets hard because it is a personal preference. And everybody's, it's been a big topic, how COVID was dealt with, the mask wearing and the choices. So it is a bit of a gray area and it's a judgment call.
Right. And, and as you said, when President Biden declared the pandemic was over, I mean, I didn't even know what date, but it wasn't that long ago. I mean, it, it wouldn't. So that's my question is, I would like to capture probably more people in this. And maybe even if it goes to the end of 2021, I mean, I would like to see some kind of calculations to see if we can capture more people that worked, maybe were hired, like you said, on April 1st of 2021, but still worked during the heavy times of pandemic.
And if the council's interested in that, I would suggest maybe moving forward with this at this time, since people have been waiting, asking about this, and then you, we come back again for another round.
Thank you. Counsel Westerville.
Thank you very much. So how was this date agreed upon?
The 2020 date wasn't satisfactory for everyone. And the 2020 date, the original one, I think that's the date that the state of Connecticut used for the hero pay. That was right around the time that there was the declaration. So the 2020 date was a common one. There was an ask, generally speaking, to move it out. Some unions asked, some were very specific. So thinking about, okay, what was kind of the next landmark, for lack of a better word? I want to say right at the beginning of 2021, I think, is where the shot became available. And it was, of course, by preference, so first responders and different folks who were affected working in certain areas. So that's around about the next line of demarcation, for lack of a better word, in the evolution of the pandemic.
Okay. Thank you very much. I mean, I, I guess one thing I would say is, COVID is still a thing. People still get it. So it's not like it's going away. Eventually, this has to stop. And I just think that if they came up with a, a reasoned solution for a date, that we should go with that, throwing out another date in there, we could do that indefinitely, just because people are still going to come down with COVID. People are still going to get sick. It's got to end at some point. I think this is a good date, if that's what you were comfortable with. I prefer to stick with that date. Thank you very much.
Counsel Bordelone.
Thank you. No, when the floor was open to ask, like, when the end date was, when the town manager brought up the fact of that it was the renovations, I stated, yes, that's what I remember as well. It was partially that, but extension was, I remember there was mold in here, dehumidification, they were putting the new screens in and the flooring and the whole renovation. And there was a delay, I think, if I remember to collect, town manager, on getting a piece of this.
Some materials.
We were ready to come in and it was delayed even further. So, but I do respect the fact that we want to capture that, you know? As, again, Counselor Gieske stated, that not everyone was getting their shots at that time. But also, there were a lot of people who were immunocompromised. I, myself, I wore my mask up here probably only until about four months ago. I was still wearing my mask. And every time McBride coughed, I, no. But, you know, but I had, everyone has different reasons. And, and I'm still considered immunocompromised and I still struggle sometimes wondering, should I have my mask on or not? So I guess it is, when is the end date? You know, I was fortunate, where I was working in the medical field, so I also was immunocompromised. But they also told me they weren't sure if I should get it yet because of my condition. They, there was no research. But I was lucky I got mine in January of that year. So I'm not sure, but I do think I want to support all of our staff, any way that we can. So my first, next question is, what's the precedent for other towns, I guess? You know, is this something new? Like, what, what, what are other towns doing? What's their cutoff dates? Do we know? Or how are they managing that with their employees? Because as much as I'm fully in support and I'm thankful because the money is available for our town staff, there are a lot of jobs, I'll admit. My job, I got, I got, I got nothing. And I was working in the medical field while scopes were going down people's throats with no mask and they were coughing us in surgery. Again, if it's available, though, absolutely I want our town staff to be, have access to that. So, but just keep in mind, you know, where we try to find that balance, there are a lot of people who didn't get anything. And so it is, it is nice that we have this. So I'm just curious, this money that was allocated, what, what other towns do that are surrounding us?
Only a couple of towns come to mind farther out in the state. And honestly, they got the money a long time ago because there was a different process where it was released. So I'm not sure we're able to compare in the same way as far as a cutoff date because it happened in the past. So they didn't have to worry about looking backwards and creating that date.
So then it might be not probably to keep moving it, then it could create more problems, I'm wondering, that if we keep dragging it out. Yeah, but my other question, so like New London, Stonington, none of them gave any money in this arena for their town plays?
It doesn't ring a bell for general conversation for me.
That would be good, I mean, if we allocate this today, it'd be good to bring that information back with it. Again, I just want to see, again, and I'm in full support, if money's available to give to our staff, absolutely. But not every town did it and not every job. In some of the highest risk areas, they didn't get anything. You know, my husband, you know, works for corrections. He, he didn't get a dime extra for being in a prison locked in with COVID. You know, so it is a bit of a luxury, so we do have to find the end date somewhere.
And I'll say I don't know what all of the other local towns did. I'm not sure I want to call them out by name either and say this one did or this one didn't.
I mean, I could call, I'll, I'll call New London, I'll call Stonington and just ask, like, what type of ARPA relief you gave to your boys?
Because I don't think all of them did, I'll put it that way.
But if there is something available, I think it's great. So I guess my next question is, it was stated we should probably move to move the funds out of this account. So now do we wait or?
Well, unless you think you're going to end up doing another round, then you leave them here until you, you'd want to leave them till you're wrapped up and you're for sure done.
Yeah, and I, I can't answer that tonight, is my, because we don't have a number of how many more that would affect or what that number would look like. So I would need more information.
Thank you.
I think it would be a little difficult because I might have to protect them every single month.
Yeah.
Because there's a moving target of when the hire dates are. So it becomes a little hard to chase that date, to pick a finite date.
Thank you for all your information that you did bring. I appreciate it and advocating for our employees.
I was just going to, for a point of reference, we also had our own emergency declarations that were going through this. The, we had, you had to wear masks within town buildings. That came off around February 8th of 22, just, just as a point of reference.
Counsel Franco.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counsel Parker, I think you want to speak first.
Counsel Parker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I can agree to the date of March 31st, 2021 right now. I cannot go beyond that because I don't know how many employees it's going to affect. And as you previously stated, everyone was still wearing masks inside. So they were protected somehow. And they knew going in when they were getting the job that COVID was around. No offense to the employees, but this is, it kicked off when people were already working in here. And if we start doing more, we're going to either find out we're going to keep doing this, and then they're going to say, well, I worked here from 2021 to 2022. COVID's coming back. It's still around, we're still getting it. I've had it twice, as well as counsel board being immunocompromised, I myself am. So I won't be here if somebody's sick. So that's why I sit home at Zoom, because I'm afraid of getting it again. I've had it twice after receiving the vaccines. So I'm wondering when we're going to put a stop to it. It depends on how many people, because we could have 75 more people if there were that many hired. And how much are we going to have left? And if we run out of money and we still need more money, where was it going to come from, Mr. Manager?
I mean, all depends on the amount of money. There are some untapped funds at this point, but ultimately, what the council would decide. If you used up all ARPA dollars, then you'd be looking at something like contingency.
Thank you.
Counsel Franco.
Thank you. So from what I'm, what I'm hearing so far, just moving from 2020 of March to March of 2020 was sort of just an arbitrary number due to vaccinations came out at that time and to add another year. Is that basically what you did? Add another year?
There was a request, yes, to extend beyond. It didn't necessarily say, okay, we want this set date, but trying to be fair and incorporate another layer of employees that were here during that time and looking for some line of demarcation in a, a long pandemic that, yes, as people are still getting affected by, there has to be a line somewhere. So yes, that seems like a reasonable date to accommodate another group of employees.
And let me ask, do you think, so between 2020 and 2021, you're, you're adding between 23 to 25 more people, you said, right?
Yes, yes.
Do you think you hired that many people between 21 and 22? That's like another year?
It's possible, yeah.
Okay, because doing the math, if you're saying 25 people basically equal up to $18,000, and there's still a remainder of 37,000 in this account, and there was another 25, would it be possible there were 50 or 75 more people?
I think it would depend on which staff, because as you know, there's two tiers of payment. So if we had, I believe we hired a, a large number later on that get the higher payment, there might not be that money. So it depends on the mix of employees.
Okay. I would, I would like to put an amended motion on the floor. I would like to have the, this motion, but also ask you to please come back to us with numbers for another additional six months and an additional year. And, and leave the money that's still, the remaining money in this fund. And at that time, we would decide if we send it back into the ARPA fund or if we would distribute it and choose another date.
Okay. All right, so I got a motion by Counsel Franco to just amend, to add on. I, hmm, I guess I'm trying to understand, are you saying to pass this and bring it back? Because we can, I guess we don't really need a motion for that.
You do need a motion for that because otherwise you would need six votes to bring it back.
Point of information?
Yeah.
My question would be, it would be technically a separate, we can make it a separate motion because it's for a different time period, timeline of ARPA fund money. Is that correct?
I agree. I, I think it's a different, I think it's a, I don't think it's the same question.
Point of information? Can you just re, and I apologize, I just want to make sure I'm understanding. Can you just restate Counsel Franko's? And it's not, because I wasn't listening, I'm just trying to understand before I vote exactly what we're, we're trying to debate here.
Okay. So I don't have a second yet, but.
Can I just hear?
Yes. It's to have the same motion as stated, except it's also going to come back and we're going to have numbers for projecting six months out. So I guess September, end of September, September 30th, 2021, and March 31st, 2022. So that'd be six months and a year. And we could decide on that later.
And leaving, and leaving the funds, as I also hear that part, leaving the, don't touch the funds, is that what I heard? Because there was a talk about moving the funds out of the account.
No, 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 that if we, no, the money will stay there.
That is in my, that is in my motion, yes.
To leave the funds.
To leave the funds and not send them back to the, the ARPA bucket.
But that's going to happen regard, like, you would have to make a motion, you would have to make a motion to move that money out. If you don't do that, it's going to stay in there, definitely.
And, and at, when it comes back, we would decide then what to do with the remaining funds, yes.
Right.
Instead of tonight. Because Mr. Burt has mentioned, we should decide what to do with the remaining funds.
Right. All I'm saying is that I, I think that there could be, we can do it this way, but it just needs to be a referral and we could bring this right back.
I don't want to run into needing six counselors.
It wouldn't be six because we're deciding from, like, this, this is deciding from March 31st before. Your, your question would be September 30th, 22 and 21 and March 31st, 22. I mean, it's, it's, it's just separate to me. We're not, we're not, if we pass this today, it's not a rejection of giving people that got hired after money. It's just an approval of giving people that were hired from this date before money, is what I'm saying. I don't think you would need three, but that's just my opinion. I think you could just make another referral for it. But we could do it this way anyway, just to not complicate things too much. I just don't want, you know, your motion to fail and then now, now there's a real question of whether your motion failed or not and whether you can bring it back for six months now, now there's a real question of whether your motion failed or not and whether you can bring it back for six months is, I, I don't like that rule. I think it's complicated and needlessly complicated.
Well, that's why I'm putting it in there because then we pass this and then I'm getting the
That's what I'm saying. But if your amendment fails today, right now, now I would be of the opinion that you can't make that referral.
That's potential. That is potential.
If we do not vote on your amendment today, you, in my opinion, you can make that referral.
I get it.
Okay.
But if you're not gonna support this, you're not gonna support the referral when it comes to the floor then, I would think, if you, if you're not interested in having a discussion here, just to even hear more information.
That's fine. Okay. So I got a motion by Counsel Franco to amend the, the motion as we see it in order to add this to a future agenda with the dates of September 30th, 2021 and, uh, March 31st, 2022. So is there, is there a second by, on that? Yeah. Is there, is there a second? Okay, I'm asking a second. All right. You still have the floor for two minutes.
Okay. Well, then I, I guess the council is good with the March 20, uh, 21 date and, um, I will support this. And I honestly think it should have gone out further and we should have got more information to find out what it would have been like at like September or even the end of the year. Because there were people that were hired and some people may say, well, yeah, we're working through COVID now, but they were not like the numbers that we were seeing back then. Those numbers were very high in our community and, um, they're not that high like they aren't, were back then. So, um, thank you for bringing this forward. I appreciate it. And I appreciate the staff bringing it to your attention, which then brought it to our attention. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Counsel Bordelone?
Uh, thank you. I can appreciate Counselor Parker's comment. You know, at that point, as we moved the date down, people were coming in knowing that this was the working condition. It wasn't like a new tragedy versus like being in an office building with your desk next to somebody so close and having the mask and, you know, like later it, it, not, not that it made it better. It's just it was the circumstance that you were coming in. There were nurses still coming in to work and doctors still coming in and doing scoping and knowing the exposure rate. So I, I, I do think that this is a fair option considering some towns did not. And if there is extra expended funds, I really would like them to move into COVID repair, which is homelessness, food, insecurity, heat and housing and childcare costs. People are right now struggling to, to meet those. So if there is only 10,000 left or 20 or 30, you know, if that goes back into the funding, then that goes back to our communities and puts food to people's table and back in their pockets. Um, so I, I, that's how I feel. So I don't know if I need to make, do I add on here this motion to put the one that the town manager requested to move, to return the funds back to the, uh,
ARPA fund balance.
ARPA fund balance. I guess I would add that motion to this. I hope for a second.
I'm asking a second.
Then what are we gonna do then with the remaining funds?
The money will stay in the account until the council decides what to do with it.
But it's, may I just, point of information?
Hold on. Just, let's just, okay.
I have a point of information.
This is, just one second. This is, uh, we are just, there is about
About 37.
There's $55,500 left. We're, tonight, the motion on the floor is to allocate 18,250 left, uh, of that money. There will be $37,250. We do not have to have a motion on what we're going to do with that $37,250 tonight. The council can decide that later on. We can decide that tonight if, if, if counselors want, but it, it, if, if you move that, it moves out, then it goes back into the pool. It's gonna have to be allocated in a separate process. It, it, that money will just stay there if this, if this passes and then we can, in the future, figure out what we're gonna do. Yeah.
Were you waiting for a motion? I wasn't speaking and the clock was still going. Other people were speaking.
I understand.
So my understanding, I just want to be clear, if we leave this money in this account, we have to come back to the council to move it out, to move it out to people that need it to eat. Why wouldn't it make sense to move this remaining money if no one is in agreement to, um, support Counselor Franco's motion, which was to give more employees money? Then it would make sense to me as a council to move that money out of that account that's earmarked for employees into the ARPA pool so that it can go to people's table. That's the way I'm understanding it because we have to do another motion to move it. So that's why I added that was to now say that the support wasn't here for Counselor Franco's motion. So let's remove that remaining money into the, the pool of ARPA funding so it can be properly allocated to other event. I'm just confused. I just, so that's my clarification question. Why delay?
And just to be clear, yeah, it would just be to pull, it would have to be allocated at some point. For instance, I would not be shocked to need more money for, uh, human services at some point.
So that's
And at that time, we could make that, let's take this bunch of remaining from here and the rest out of the fund balance.
And, and for, for just accounting and transparency, it would look better for numbers to get that money out of there, pull it into the whole pool so that you can see it. So when human services or some other outside agency comes before us, we could allocate it at that appropriate time. It's already been moved. That, that just seems to be physically responsible. So that's, I asked for the support. Again, that's my motion. I hope I can have a second.
I will second Counselor Bordelone's motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Can I?
Okay. I've got a motion by Counsel Bordelone, a second by Counsel Westerveld to move the remaining approximately $37,250 to the unallocated funds. Okay.
Point of information, that is an amended amendment to the original motion, correct? Okay, thank you.
Counsel Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Town Manager Burke, I'm gonna just make an assumption and you can tell me if it's true or not, that all the different ARPA allocations have, may have extra money left over in them.
Correct.
Do we have sort of
Yeah, I, certainly we'll have some that come in under budget.
Do we have sort of a townwide date that we're gonna say we're sort of done, kind of clean all the, sweep all those accounts and put them back?
I think each project's gotta be treated, obviously, we have some firm dates in the overall timeline of ARPA for when they have to be allocated and used, but barring that, as long as good progress is being made, you wouldn't cut it off in the middle. But eventually some decision, like if, if they say we are wrapped up and all money's paid on a project and you have 5,000 left and that's sitting there waiting to, there be swept in or reallocated directly to another use.
Into, or somebody that was short, you might take that, put it into short or something like that. And, but we have not made any decision on what we're gonna do with that money in terms of, it's not assigned for, for, for housing, for hunger, for pump tracks or, could be anything.
Right.
But just a question on the motion that's on the floor, was it the intent of that motion to have, to go for hunger?
Uh, no, no, it would just, it would just, uh, it would just move it to the, to the pool. It would be unallocated as, as
Is there an advantage to keeping some of this money in some of these accounts like?
Well, in terms of this, I would say you only want to keep it in if you think you may allocate more dollars because otherwise we're gonna continue to get requests from people for dollars. So just for our own benefit, if you don't think you're gonna do anything other, then we should move it out.
Director Green, do you see any other options of the remaining balance of this money?
I can't see why we would leave anything else in here if this is passed in the way it was presented, that this is the finite date and this is the approval. I can't think of anything at the moment of why we would be going back.
Just be sitting your, in your account.
Correct, yeah.
Town Manager, when, when do we have to make sort of a final choice or date on sweeping these accounts? Is there a, a date that that has to happen by?
Well, I think you just have, what do you have to have it all allocated by the end of '24, spent by the end of '26? I don't think there's
Oh, so we have a year, we have a year.
Yeah, we have a lot of time.
A year and four months, five months, something like that.
And we continue to get a lot of requests for human services, for aid, for rents and things.
I'm not really in favor of this motion on the floor. I think I'd just like to leave it as it is for now and then at some point just sweep it when we're generally sweeping these accounts. So, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Counsel McBride?
Yep, thank you. Can I get some clarification on the motion in terms of, you, you mentioned there were two different payments. What are the different amounts for the two different payments?
I believe it's 1,500 for the PD, 500 for other folks and then half of either of those amounts, if there's anybody part-time, that would be in that bucket.
Thank you. And, and just for clarification, I, I could support Counsel Franco's end result to giving more, more funds out. I didn't support the six month or 12 month, but I think it's a good initiative that could be looked at, but I would prefer to have you do some research and, and what other municipalities are doing and what their, what their timeframes are, what they're using for due dates. Uh, I know I was, I'm in New London and they, they did it a little differently in that they negotiated with the union contracts directly. So it's as of the cutoff date when the union negotiation was signed. So that, that won't be as relative, but it would be good to get some information on what other municipalities are doing to support the additional amount. That's why I would support, I would not second Counsel Bordelone's because I, I still think that money could be utilized for others. With that being said, I, the reason I asked for the 1,500, I think of the ARPA as the March, April, May 2020 was when the individual were really in that climatic impact of COVID. Are these individuals that are, that started April of '21, they're still getting 1,500 even though they weren't in the, the, the heavy COVID time period?
If this were approved for this next batch of employees, I would use the original amounts as the council approved them. I wouldn't be making any adjustments to the per employee payout.
Did you say, I'm sorry, did you say April of '21?
Well, is it, uh, what's the start date of this new motion is, is March?
So it would pick up from March of, well, really April of 2020 out a year. Because it was through March 16th. So I'll say March 17th of 2020 a year later, March 31st of 2021.
Right. So if you started in April of '21, that would be the first employee that didn't get
Correct.
Okay, but the employee that was hired two months before that, that really wasn't in the COVID, climatic COVID, is still gonna get the same amount of somebody who
I, again, would say that, that is a matter of opinion of where you were in the spectrum of life and dealing with the pandemic and everybody has a different view of how they protected themselves for it and, you know, what was the height or what was not. So we tried to look for something that was sort of a line of demarcation because there really is a gradient. When you look at this time span and how it's affected different groups, there's no one easy answer for everybody. So this was trying to make a compromise where we took into account the perspectives of some of the unions and really thought about it and said, okay, this does make sense. And is there another group of employees that we could reasonably put into this payment?
Okay, thank you for that. And the other thought I would have is I would, I think it's, I would support when and if the council decides if they're giving out more money or not, to do it, to do a ARPA review. I think Counselor Jones was alerting that, you know, all at once, review all of the ARPA leftover buckets and then have the council do it all at once versus a one-off for this particular funding level. So, um, but I would support, so I would support the original motion. Thank you.
Just to mention, we may have a need for something like human services before we would ever come close to the dates for those projects that are out there. So, you know, it may come into play earlier than that. Obviously, that'd be the ideal though, is to do that.
Counsel Guyaski?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I would also prefer, I agree, I second Counsel Jones and Counsel McBride's statements of kind of just leaving, um, the ARPA funding in this account. And just in case, I, Director Green, do you see any potential need that these numbers could change if the current, uh, if we pass the current motion? Is that, I believe it's 18,500. Is there any way that that would change or, you know, down the road, you know, going with Counsel Franco's suggestion of potentially adding the dates on? Is that, is that potential, is that number potential to change if we just stay with where we are right now?
If you don't add anything extra on, my thought is this number could only go down if employees have left since the time of this count because you have to be Yeah.
Okay, so this is max, all right. Um, so to me that I would prefer, I, I agree with Counselor Bordelone's statements about human services and need for that, but I would feel it would be easier, um, just to go through all the ARPA accounts at once. And if human services did need those, uh, funding, I would prefer if the town manager came to the council and presented us with that motion. And another thing I want to point out is if we take this money out of here, I think it's more difficult to put it back in. Um, so I think that, uh, I would not like to rush the decision tonight.
Counsel Franco?
Thank you. I'll just put the clean motion on the floor. Make a motion to recommend a resolution to approve the change. Did you make this motion already? Has it been seconded, the original?
Yeah, we have one amendment on the floor.
And it's, the, the original's on there like this?
Yeah, we're just having
So then, um, if there's interest in coming back and bringing this back to employees, I never got a second on my emotion. So there can be another amended motion because that's not considered a motion. So maybe I should do it a little bit more vague and, um, have the motion on the floor and ask you to come back with more information regarding payments to different scenarios on costs that would, to change different dates.
I will bring back whatever the council decides.
I'll second that.
I got a counsel, uh, motion by Counsel Franco, a second by Counsel McBride. Basically to just bring, bring this back and to discuss what we're gonna do with the extra $37,000 that's sitting in the count after if we
With different scenarios.
Allocated, sure.
And there may be a little bit more if it comes under, if anybody's left.
Are these two motions tied together?
No, you
Counsel Franco's motion and the original motion?
No, we can just vote on Counsel Franco's motion.
And that's sort of almost like a direction for the director to do something and then do the other.
Sure.
Okay, I just don't want them tied.
Right, right, right. Like if Counsel Franco's, um, uh, motion fails, we can still pass the original.
And if a motion passes, we can still, we will still pass the original motion. There's no effect between these two, these two motions.
Right, except for the fact that it'll just come back
Okay.
In the future.
This motion would pass tonight.
If, if, you know, this has to be considered an amendment because you can't have two main motions at the time.
Right, so this is just an amendment. So then you'll just, then it would just, it would be like you just took her amendment and tacked it onto the end of this. And then it would pass, so hers has to pass twice. You vote on the motion as amended.
It's passing this tonight
Okay.
And asking her to come back and get further information on employee pay.
Counsel Franco's motion fails, we still go back to the
Right, we just vote on this.
We go back.
Well, we also have to, we have to
All right, as long as they're not one affecting the other.
No.
Right.
Point of information, can we repeat the motion on the floor?
Okay, so we have a main motion. It reads, to recommend a resolution to approve a change to the date, uh, town grant and employees must have been employed as of, uh, must have been employed as of to March 31st, '21 to qualify for payment under the ARPA grant to be issued if the employee continues to work for the town at the time of issue. We have a first amended motion by Counsel Bordelone. Um, and that is to, uh, I'm sorry.
Sweep the money.
Yeah, right.
Sweep the money.
Okay, we have a first amended motion by Counsel Bordelone, second by Counsel Westerveld. That's to put the, the third, the anticipated $37,000 back into, uh, unallocated funds. And then we have a second amended motion by
They're allocated, the remainder of this allocation.
The remainder, to unallocate the money that we have already previously allocated.
The balance after allocation.
Right, it's, it's
Well, it's already allocated, yeah.
It's presently allocated.
You're just giving a parameter. It's already allocated.
Right.
So you're not reallocating. You're just giving a parameter change to allow another expenditure.
It's the balance.
So the remainder of this allocation is what you want to say.
The remainder of this allocation will be unallocated.
After making this expenditure extent. Just a reminder of allocation. And we'll write it up the right way in the resolution.
Okay.
Sweep the remaining.
Sweep the remaining.
After distribution.
And it would go, uh, point of, it would go back into the ARPA pot to be available for
Then it would be considered unallocated.
Okay, then we have a second amended motion by Counsel Franco and that's to, uh, second amendment by Counsel Franco and that's to bring this back in the future with different options on what to do with the main, remaining money in the account, if there is any. So theoretically, we can't pass Counsel Franco and Counsel Bordelone's motion.
Right.
Okay. So I don't, I'm not sure they both can be on the floor at the same time, but we'll figure it out.
No, yeah.
Point of information, so would Counselor Franco's amended motion make it the option of just extending out the benefits that, um, these employees or future employees, not future employees, but employees after the March 31st date would be eligible for?
Yeah.
It's listening to the options that she would present.
But just understand that if you pass Counsel Franco's motion and Counsel Bordelone's motion, there will be
No, no, it's two, point of information, uh, oh, it's two separate amendments on the floor. So we're pa, we have So we're, we have to go backwards, so we're going to vote on Counselor Franco's first. Either goes up, it passes, then we're done. And then we go back to the original with her motion. If hers fails, it goes to Counselor Borlon's amendment. If that fails, then it goes back to the original.
You have to vote on all the amendments.
Mr. Burke?
Not at the same time. It's one at a time.
That's not true.
It's one at a time.
May we take a recess? May we take a recess?
As, as the chair of rules, I'm trying to tell you.
More recess.
Let's take a recess. Let's take a breather.
Let's look up those Robert rules of order.
I'm saying it. I'm the rule chair, I'm telling you.
Counselors back from recess at 8:27. Okay, so we figured it out. We have an amendment to the main motion by Counselor Borlon. Before any other amendment to the main motion gets made, we have to resolve Counselor Borlon's amendment. The only other amendment that can be made is an amendment to Counselor Borlon's amendment, which could be something like, instead of returning all the money to be allocated, return half of it to be allocated. So it would be an amendment of her amendment. Once her amendment is, is resolved, then a, a different amendment to the main motion can be made. Understood? Okay, so we are currently discussing Counselor Bor, Counselor Borlon's amendment to turn the money back to the, the main pool, the, the remaining money back to the remaining pool, okay? So is there any other discussion on that? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Okay, so I have two in favor, Counselor Borlon, Counselor Westerville, seven opposed, zero abstaining. That fails. Counselor Franco, you can now make your amendment, if you wish.
Thank you. I make an amended motion to have the director come back with additional information pertaining to different dates in employee pay.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, Jones.
Motion by Counselor Franco, second by Jones. Effectively, it effectively returned this back after we make a decision on it with further options on what we can do with the remaining money. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know who can answer this, but, or maybe through you to Counselor Franco, is what stops this from just going with the original and not her amendment and just the director just bringing us that information? Pertaining at the council meeting.
If we're directed, it'll just bring it back, something the mayor wants to put on the agenda.
Either way, it'll do the same thing, yeah.
So even if this weren't, weren't to pass, like you could still provide us the information? That's my understanding, correct?
Yes, if that's the counsel's, my circle.
May, may I? Because he drafted the question to me through the mayor. Mayor? The difference, I believe, is this would be, become an agenda item because you're saying, yes, you want this to come back for future discussion. Not saying you're in favor of it, or, you know, it's saying that you would like it to come back to the council for further discussion on the remaining funds and what the other options would be.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Parker?
So could the motion in effect say have the resolution at the time of issue to say, to include a further discussion of the remaining balance will be at a, set at a different time?
Yeah.
Is basically what the motion should say?
Right.
Okay.
Counselor McBride?
Just a comment, I think it would be ideally, I don't know how we do this procedurally, but it would be nice to, at a similar time, either that meeting or a future meeting, to have any other available funds that are unallocated or that you know are completed, to come back to the councils. The council can move those to any other areas they deem appropriate, if, if there's any projects that are completed.
We just, we're just wrapping up getting the original contract signed with everybody. It's going to be at least a year before, likely before we have really much to share, so.
Is that for, for all the ARPA projects?
For a lot, well, I'm sure there'll be some staff ones, but the bulk of, for the outside agencies, it'll be a while before we have anything.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Borlon?
Yeah, and I just, again, you know, I don't think one motion's bad or good. My thing is, is I think of the people and what the money was meant for. And I think we've done our due diligence and we've extended this contract out, which I can respect. I think that movie needs, money needs to move back into the pool, especially after what the town manager just stated, that it could be a year. Some of those things are just starting. So if there's only, how much in the account right now, John, before?
I just looked it up. We have about 184, but that's before the, so if the 15,000 goes through for the bike pump paths run, it'll reduce it by that much.
Reduce it by 15, so 180.
I do hope, though, in the fall that, you know, the city's working on their cost for the seawall and hoping we're going to get some back of it.
Right, we don't know yet. So I'm seeing winters coming, food insecurity, home insecurity, homelessness is on a rise. And so we could possibly have 30-something thousand dollars sitting. The remaining ones that we have to sweep may take a year. If we don't think that we're going to move anymore, and there's been a hard stop here, we've done our work, we've extended it. Let's move it back into the pot so that it can be allocated to people, which is what the ARPA money was used for. So, that, that is my only thing. If I don't have that support tonight, that's okay. But again, I can't help but to speak up for the human service side of things. And having that extra 20 or 30,000 could mean rent, food, oil, and heat for people in our community. And so I would hate for it to just kind of sit here and wait again for, what's the timeframe you think this could make it back to the council? I'm not rushing, I'm just trying to put it in perspective.
I wouldn't expect it to take long. It'd probably be the second, call it September.
Sometime in September. Yeah, I just, again, that, that's my reason. Then it's not that I don't want to talk about, but if we, we, we had a vote and nobody voted in favor of the one motion to do anything further with the funds, so it just makes sense to move it back to its original pot so it can be reallocated into human services. Especially since it was stated that the other ones may take a little bit longer to sweep. And I just want to have a nice, strong pot going into the winter months here, so, thank you, and the holidays. So, thank you.
Andrew Burke, there is unallocated money, though, right now.
Correct.
Like over 100,000?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, it'd be about 100, it's just under 170 after.
So if human services need money, we could take from there first, so.
Sure.
Until that's down to zero, the money that's sitting on, already allocated to projects but unspent, it won't be needed. We would take from that pool first, and then, and then.
So my, my thought, though, is, is there other things that may come up that we're not aware of? There's also other initiatives and things that we can still be doing with human services under the direction of the town manager and the human service staff. There might be some other needs that come up. And money could be moved, obviously, we don't want to plead it all, but let's just say, you know, some other things are going to come up that are going to cost 50 or 60,000, or something else comes in short on another pool somewhere else. We don't know. So I, again, I just, I, I think it makes sense to move it back in its original pot and have it ready, you know, to go since we have a chance to sweep it. And as, I agree with Counselor McBride, I do think all of them need to come. They may come staggered, and I, and I can appreciate that, John, if that's what ends up happening as some start to close, then maybe they can start to come on as clusters on the agenda until we get to the end. But in the meantime, I think, you know, having that there, you know, when, when the, the folks came to speak about the bike pump, we were able to say, yep, let's do 15,000 because we had 180. It'd be nice to just have those, that monies in, in the appropriate area. Thank you.
Right, we still have the contingency. Counselor Parker?
So, I know Counselor Borlon just asked about her amendment, basically spoke about her amendment. Since that is now dead, we can't bring it back and allocate that money back into the regular funds of ARPA funds, let me say it that way. We have to work on the main motion on the floor currently. So can we proceed forward to that part? I'm in favor of bringing it back to here. Then we can have the discussion about if they need it. But my only concern is if that's going to be brought up, do they get a reduced amount? Because they weren't here for the entire time period of the people who started in 2020 or 2021, the first three months of 2021. Are we going to reduce the amount? So that would be my question to see how the.
As, as the wording is currently, it won't reduce it. You'd have to change the parameter.
Because I foresee people being upset of getting a full $1,500, 750, 500, 250, and they weren't there from the beginning. So that would be my concern. So that would be my concern regarding that, so, thank you.
Wait, are you talking March 31st, 2021 back, or a future date that we haven't decided on? Like, are you talking about the motion that's in this package?
The Council Frankel's motion is to bring the information back to us.
Right.
So my concern is about the rest of them after April 1st of 2021 on, because that's what is being asked of her to look at.
Right.
They only have so much time on the books compared to the ones up to March 31st, 2021.
Right. But the people who we are allocating to today potentially, that will be for the same amount? The future, the. As it stands.
As it stands.
The future, if it comes back with Council Frankel's motion, I mean, the council can decide what they want to do on that.
I just want confirmation of how many is going to affect. A second. Thank you.
Okay. Council Frankel?
Thank you. This is gonna be my final time speaking on it. I just hope that you come back with different scenarios, different options, and that this council would make the final decision on whatever they chose. And and I would also agree that if there is any unused money, instead of waiting to some future date, if they're going at maybe the next meeting, we do sweep it back if the decision is not to spend. On, because this money has been allocated specifically for employee ARPA funds. And it's in this bucket, basically, we call them. And if, whatever the council chooses at the following meeting, if it is, whatever remaining is swept back, because I do agree that in the future, there may be reasons. And there's not another reason to bring it back to us and at another meeting, to go over it once again. If we have the opportunity to just take care of it while it's in front of us. But that's for the next meeting. And I would just hope that if we could even get it sooner here, would be better. Because then we would have a better picture of remaining funds and potentially, if anybody else wanted to bring something forward or somebody else in the community was looking for some kind of funding for something, they could request it and we could take that up if it pops up. So, I would hope everybody would be in, we could get support to just at least get this back here to discuss while we pass this. And thank you once again for bringing the change in date. I appreciate that. And as you've said, and I would reiterate, the date of March 31st, 2021 is just a date picked. There's no exact special reason for that exact date, correct?
None of this is a science. There's gonna be some objectivity, there's gonna be some employees that are, so some of the points I've heard may feel a certain way about it. I'm not sure in this situation you can please every single person, so it's really, I suppose, the will of the council and I will bring back whatever is voted for.
Thank you, I appreciate your work. Thank you.
Okay. Council Westervelt?
Thank you very much. With all due respect to the efforts of town staff, based on the information that you had and the ask that was given to you, I feel they've done their job and I think this date that they gave us is a good date. And again, I will state that this has got to end at some point. They found a date, this is what they worked with, this is what they worked towards, and I see no reason to extend it any further. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so, seeing no further discussion, we'll vote on Council Frankel's amendment. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Carry seven in favor, two opposed, Borlon, Westervelt, zero abstaining. Now we vote on the main motion as amended. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Carry seven in favor, two opposed, Borlon, Westervelt, zero abstaining. Very good. Onto town clerk additional position and job description. We have Clerk McCouch here, as well as Director Green.
Would you like me to read the motion?
Sure.
Make a motion to recommend a resolution to approve a new full-time supervisor town clerk position in the town clerk's department. Pay range from 65,387 to 82,714. And approve updates to the job description for the supervisor clerk. I so move.
Second, Frankel.
Move by Parker, second by Frankel.
Okay, hi again. So, we are looking at not only a job description update, this was a previously encumbered position at some point in time in the town clerk's office, so the updates really reflect the capacity for this management, or I should say, non-union position that would be supervising to really closely work with the staff, do some of the management in the office in a way that doesn't currently exist. And you'll note in the request for council discussion, there's a few items that have changed that necessitate this additional support for the town clerk's office, and I will let.
Okay, so have you had an opportunity to read the old and new and the comparisons? Like Director Green had said, a lot of this is updating the job description, but my office has been encumbered with new statutes and including a new software program for online recordings for all of our town records. Not, I'm talking about land records and deeds and those sorts of things that we get all, from all over the country. So those will be, that's a new system. We're gonna start training next week with that system. It is, with our current vendor, COT Systems, and it's been used by other towns. We were not using the system for one main reason, because we had an increase into our conveyance tax because of our designation as a distressed community. This was going back some years. Not that long ago. And so there was no way of collecting that revenue through that online system. So that's all gone away for us, although there has been a change to the software that we could do it now, so. But anyway, that's a big a big step forward for my office, and I really need another person in my capacity. So, that's, that also is fluid with the entire department, so it's not just land records and not just vital records, it's the whole department. And that's how our department should be, one office doing everything, but we're physically separated. Can't do anything about that right now. So, you know, efficiencies are needed. So depending, you know, depending on what you decide to do this evening is depending on how efficient I can get, so.
All right. Thank you. Council Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Director Green, this position was already allocated, if I heard you correctly, or?
No, this position has existed prior in the town clerk's office, so it's not a new job description per se. That's an update, but this would be a new additional position to the department.
Okay. So we don't have the salary range from before? Is that?
It was some years ago, I think, that it existed?
I mean, we were talking.
So this would be, I track the salaries throughout time for the non-union wage, if that's what you're asking. So this would be what the equivalent is today for this position, the range that's here.
And how long ago have we not had someone in that similar position?
2012. A while ago.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. Town Clerk McCouch, can you speak a little bit on that, the mandate that the state just did with their land records and how that would take away from your, like, your current duties? And how different, like, the update, what does that change?
Well, so, so the mandate, it's the town clerk shall allow electronic recording. So when you put that word "shall," then that means you have to do it. So if it said "may," it would be great, but it says "shall," so. This is, so.
So technically, this is gonna be like your second deputy town clerk, is like my understanding of it.
No, deputy, deputy doesn't have this kind of authority. Only the town clerk does, and if I have a person in a supervisory position, then they would have authority to to oversee employees, so.
Okay, so they're differentiating a little bit there.
I mean, a deputy can go to a town council meeting and sit in, you know, or swear someone in, but they can't direct another employee or supervise, not direct. Take my wishes and apply them, how's that?
And then you said this would free up time for you, for the town clerk to focus on strategic projects. Could you give some examples on what that would be?
Oh, so the records management program that we're supposed to be doing that I'm hoping to help coordinate with the whole town. The town manager and I have traded emails, but there is a guideline from the state library for records electronic management program. So I know that the police department has a software, and I really was curious to see how that works for theirs. The idea is if you have a record, it's not all records, there's many records that have to stay in paper form, but there are a whole host of records that can be electronically filed. And then you can get permission to destroy your paper. And not ever have to use paper again, you'd just be electronic. That's, the whole motion is to incorporate electronic forms instead of paper forms.
And that's a project you wanna, you tend not to take on?
I won't be able to do it for a reason, that's beyond me, but I'd like to help outline it for the town.
Okay. Yeah, just the job description there says, so this is just to clear my understanding, the, on the updated one, page 63, the position carries with the secondary title of deputy town clerk for statutory and certification purposes. But they wouldn't be doing, like, they wouldn't have the title of deputy town clerk?
That's the old one.
No, that's still, that still carries over from the first one. So I think it's a statutory item to have an ex person in charge, but it's not the same town title that is deputy town clerk.
So there's still some hierarchy there, like you're saying?
Right, so, so, yes, exactly.
That's all the questions I have now, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just to make it clear, are we adding a new person?
Yes, this would be a new position to this department.
So not moving an existing employee up, we're looking at a brand new?
Well, I'm not sure who would get into this position, but it is an additional position to what's currently approved.
So if somebody in, in the clerk's office moved up, then you'd have to replace that person, if you did it like that?
I think we would evaluate it at that time.
We really have to evaluate that.
Every time a vacancy comes, we should be looking at.
We don't know if we're gonna afford to do it.
Okay.
What's the appropriate title and how.
It's an addition of a new, of a new employee to the town.
A new position, yes.
Okay. And on top of the 65 to 82, we also have benefits and insurance and all of that stuff, too. How many employees do we have now in the clerk's office?
Four.
Four, so this would make it five.
Four full-time. We should clarify that.
And one part-time. Can you just explain the difference of a non-union to a union person, what's?
In the context of this position? So this position would allow for the full supervision of the other folks that are in the office, and as the town clerk mentioned, it would be over everyone. So although there's kind of the two offices, there's a path in the middle there, this person would be able to train, pick up some extra duties, that would be at a management or a non-union level, so kind of differentiating out that work. They typically, within a union, you're not looking at full supervision of one union employee to another. So this position specifically has a lot of updates to show that it is managing everybody in that office, I would say, the four folks. And what that looks like, not only training, cross-training, I'm sure the town clerk is interested in for the employees, but some of the project work that she's working on to be able to give it to another non-union person to focus on whatever it is that she needs to focus on.
So is that sort of generally the definition between union, non-union, that a non-union person can be a supervisor and a union person generally isn't a supervisor over?
You can have a lead in, inside of a union, but they're usually not doing a full evaluation or issuing discipline or things like that. And I say, for this particular position, generally speaking, non-union and union is just what work is owned, for lack of a better word, by the union based on the nature of it versus management work. So that's a much broader perspective.
And what does the deputy clerk do?
The deputy clerk right now is doing all land, all route land record and all the filings for the state, the monthly filings that we do. So land record, not just recording when someone's out of the office, but, well, that's what I end up doing too, but also indexing, and that's a union job, but there's a review that is not, well, it's technical, but it's higher level. It's looking for super mistakes, you know?
So is this supervisor over the deputy clerk?
Yeah.
But the deputy clerk can represent you if you weren't able to go to a meeting? They can represent you in your capacity, but their supervisor would be the person who would kind of tell them?
Well, if I had the supervisor position, I would have the supervisor represent me, not the deputy, because supervisor ahead of, you know.
Supervisor would be the deputy.
It's only, only in name, so, so you have a town clerk button made for your state, there's no supervisor. It's clerk and town clerk or assistant town clerk, that's it. So, that's why, it's in name. For certification programs, there's not a supervisor, there's deputy. That supervisor strictly in our town. There may be other towns that have them.
And Tom Andrews, this is, I know we've done this on other job positions, this is sort of the normal way we do. When we bring in new hires, we do it this way, sort of.
Very, yeah, most commonly.
Here and there, it's the most common way that we normally do it. Okay, thank you.
Council McBride?
Yeah. Excuse me, most of my questions are answered, I'm just struggling with the departmental diagram. So there's a clerk, this is a recommended supervisor clerk, and then you have a deputy clerk under that, and then you have two other individuals.
See, that's, so I would say, as it currently exists, the job title is, yes, a deputy under the town clerk. If someone for, inside were to apply and get the job for the supervisor, any vacancies would be looked at and discussed to say what position now makes the most sense for the makeup of the department, and that should be happening every time there's a vacancy in any department, seeing if it's the proper fit, if it's a proper need. So I don't know what that would look like, or who would get it, I don't want to guess on that.
Okay, maybe it's better to ask, what's the department right now? It's clerk, deputy clerk?
And assistant clerk.
Two?
There's three assistant clerks and one deputy.
So there's five currently in your department?
Well, I'm not an employee.
Well, five people get the work done, I guess.
Yeah.
And do we know how that compares to other municipalities?
Our size? Yeah, we have way, way fewer employees for our size town. You know, we're a large, we're the largest town in southeastern Connecticut.
And I guess my question would be, and I guess I'm just in a different, I always think of these positions should come forward in the budget process, but I've discussed this before. But what's changed, or you wouldn't put this in the budget process?
July's, July, you know, the law's changed July 1st, so we never know what we're gonna be faced with. You know, the electronic recording, that was a plan for us all along. I had contracts signed two months ago, or two years ago, excuse me, so I was ready for it, but it never went through because of other reasons. It's not, not to not to belabor this, because it's technical, software issues that COT had to do, and, you know, until it was completely right, and with other vendors that were signing on for service with our town, so.
And will the supervisor be doing a lot of the new work with the, with the records, the confidential records or whatever? And will, and will the supervisor be doing a lot of the new work with the, with the records, the confidential records or whatever?
Well, with, with this online system, correct. And making sure that employees are trained properly to use the system, you know, that has to be overseen by a supervisor. I, I can't do it all, you know, so.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Boardland?
Thank you. So what, the license and certifications here, does a deputy also require to have those within three years?
No, no, I don't have that in mind, you know?
I'm just trying to see how many people in the office will be like, having these extra certifications.
Oh, there's continuing education, well, she's looking at the old.
Are you on the new or a rise, or where are you looking?
I went to the sixty-one page of the packet, license and qualifications.
Okay, so that looks like the original.
Right, so if you look at page, sixty-five, you'll see must possess and maintain a valid motor vehicle operation license.
So maybe you want to speak to?
You want to look at qualifications probably on sixty-four.
So the new one is on sixty-five?
So you're looking at the original under licenses and certifications, and maybe you want to speak to why that was removed?
Because I, I guess my question is, is, I think that's an important certi, I, I just wanted to.
Let me explain to you what the certification program is, and tell you how we, how we have been doing this for fifteen years. The certification program, there's, there's, courses that are offered throughout the year, that my employees all participate in. And that is part of the certification program, and they continue and continue those, those classes. So actually, sitting for the certification, I don't think that it's necessary. They're doing their job, they're being educated, you know, continually. That's, to me, what we need, is continued education. But having the certification, it's added money to this association that I just don't think it's valuable. You know, it's, it's a, it's a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar association fee every month to keep, or every year to keep your certification, and the town has to pay for that. Well, I'd rather put that to education, that they continue education, so that's what I've been doing.
So my question, I guess, to the town manager, or, I mean, do we know what the rule of thumb is, is there for other towns to have these certifications? I mean, I think as we grow, right, and I see more money coming out of the table, and I agree with Counsel McBride, that, you know, it is nice to have these, if they are predicted to come out during a budget session, but if they're not, then, you know, yet we have to handle them when they do, which I respect. But I guess my question is, wouldn't you want that certified municipal clerk IM, is it IIMC? I mean, now you're, now we're paying for another position after benefits and everything, it's gonna be over a hundred thousand. So to me, it would make sense that you're gonna have, you know, you have an elected clerk, you're gonna have a supervisor clerk, a deputy clerk. Like, at some point, don't you want someone, I mean, I just, is that the rule of thumb across all municipalities?
I can't speak to other, sorry, I can't speak to other municipalities, though, I would think you'd at least want it as a preferred.
Why, why is it taken out of the new written one?
I'm not involved in it.
Oh, I mean, because, once again, is you direct, and I don't, I'm trying to speak to you, because you direct your staff? I just want to understand why it would be taken out. I mean, or, as a town manager, did you want that out, or that's what I'm asking?
Again, they've been working it together, I've not been in the process.
So I, I want you to appreciate my knowledge on the certification program and the education program that's offered through the Connecticut Clerks Association. Now, I can speak to, about other towns, and there are other towns that the town clerk is hired, and then there's standard personnel guidelines and qualifications that are put into their job descriptions. It's a whole lot different than here. But I, I thoroughly believe in education, and the most current education, and that's what my employees, we have a monthly education course that we, we attend, and that's a, that's, it's free, by the way. But, but it's valuable with the Secretary of State's office, so, and having all the new information and its opportunities for us to ask questions about things that we're currently having trouble with, and it also, it shapes what's going to happen in the future for legislation for our departments. So education, to me, is the key. Now, the IIMC is an international assoc, you know, International Association of Municipal Clerks. And that is a consortium, another, you know, association that you pay to attend the courses. It's a two-week program held at a college, and then, and it's expensive, it's, I haven't looked to see what it is now. And then you go away with a certificate, and then you pay an association fee for every year. And I think it's a hundred-and-fifty dollars for that one, a year. So we do have an association fee that's separate than the certification fee that, that we pay for our town clerks to be able to go to those classes. So there's additional costs for some of the classes that are held at Connecticut, Central Connecticut College. Those are two-hundred-and-fifty dollars usually, pop, two-day courses usually.
Yeah, I, I guess, you know, I did some research, I pulled up some other towns, and this clause is kind of in there, so I guess my question to you, Anisha, I mean, I know you're revamping, and so to see it kind of come down,
We could put preferable.
I, I don't understand, I'm sorry.
We could put preferable?
I, I think it should be, I mean, I think, you know, the, from what I'm reading, you know, we, we were saying it for the guy who's gonna be the tree cutter. We can't put that for someone who's elected, because elected is always rotating. But I think it should, I mean, we could expect that out of a hire that's gonna be more permanent. I mean, elections are elections, right? You know, so I think with that, I think it would be very appropriate to have that in there. So I would like to make an amendment to this, and my edit would be to add that back in, because I feel it would be valuable to our town. I think three years is pretty reasonable, I think the cost is pretty reasonable, and I think, you know, to have that other credential in our town.
I'll second that.
Thank you. I think would be very valuable to our town, and along with the other continuing ed that is going on. Also, why, I mean, as we talk about health, the clerk goes down, God forbid, he's not there, now we have, so it's nice to have these other certifications and things that come in, and credentials. You know, some people naturally learn better by being in a structured program like that, so I think it'd be an asset.
Thank you.
Can I ask, just clarifying, would that amendment be required or preferred? Because there are timelines associated with this, so I just want to understand.
I think the way it's written, this other, you know, like, we want to set a standard, right? Must be able to obtain, I mean, at eighty-something thousand dollars, I think, must be able to obtain within three years. That, that would be my thought. I mean, it's, it's, you know, you're, they have, the qualifications up top, they have bachelor's degree, I mean, so they're coming in, should be able to pass.
And I think we did update the education, just because when we look at a conversation, a conversation we've had with some of the job descriptions is not prohibiting, and trying to be more inclusive, and, you know, what could be an equivalent, so we always are trying to take a look at the education. And around the certifications, I just defer to a subject matter expert in this, and if there's something that can be learned on the job, that kind of supports the theme that we've been talking about of not having prohibitive barriers, but just a thought of some of the discussion that was had.
I have a question. If, if it does go back to the old certification, and you have someone working for three years, they haven't obtained it, would they then be terminated?
It could be, it could be.
I think there would be a conversation, and there's, it looks like two of them here, so one in after three years, one after five years. I think we would have the conversation, we wouldn't want to automatically terminate somebody, but that would be the expectation in the hire letter, that you understand that's the parameters that you're joining under, that this is the expectation.
There could be, could be circumstances that prevent, you know, the person going to the certification courses, it's possible.
Right, my only concern, I mean, I, I want our employees to be as qualified as they possibly can. My, my concern is that we've had trouble, I mean, I, I see the old one had a bachelor's degree in accounting or something, now it's high school with six years, or associates with four years' experience. I'd imagine the reason that those qualifications change is because it's just much harder to find people with all the qualifications that you originally had, with a bachelor's, a three-year certification, a five-year certification. I, I, I don't want to put the town in a position where the qualifications are so high that now you can't even find people to fill positions, which I think is a problem around the town, and we're trying to, like, solve that problem, so I wouldn't want to make it worse with, like, a new job that we're making. I'm not, I'm not saying that this would, I don't know how prevalent this certification is, or how easy it is to attain. I don't know if three years is a, is a, you know, reasonable amount of time, or is it, if it's, you gotta go-go-go to get it. So I, I don't know what that is, but I do want to caution that we set the standard for the hire so high where now we just can't even find anyone to fill the position. So that, that's, that's my only, I don't know if you have any concerns with that as well. I mean, I see you went from bachelor's to, to high school, so, I mean, I'm assuming that there's some issue with finding people with all those qualifications.
I think for me, my motivation in looking at a lot of these job descriptions is when we talk about being equitable and including DEI in our processes. This is one of the points that you'll see out there, is that you're not creating, some might call them barriers where there doesn't need to be. So could it be reasonable that somebody had an associate's and on-the-job training, and is superb at this job, without, you know, before it was you have to have a bachelor's plus this and this? So being realistic about what does our workforce look like, are there other ways to get to success? So that's one perspective I have on that. And then I do understand that we want to have people that are trained and have certifications, and from a liability perspective, so maybe the, the middle portion is, you know, we say preferred. And I know it doesn't have quite as much teeth, because there's not a finite amount of years for it to be passed, but also agreed, we are increasingly facing a lot of competition from other towns that are looking for the same things, and I think that's a fair point, that we want to be mindful of that as well, and where is that sweet spot? That balance, where we can recognize both perspectives.
Okay. Counsel Parker?
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My concern, and I'd rather have that in, because if this person's supposed to be a supervisor that's below the town clerk, they should have, be across the board, involved in everything, and have in the certification. Because if it is called into question, anything could happen, and they say, oh, you only had on-the-job training, there's no certificate, you're a supervisor, you have to go to court and try to justify why you did what you did, or anything. So I would feel better having the person have, be certified. If, if we can have to, change one to five years and the next one to six years. Just give it to them time to get that certification, but that's a supervisor position, that second-in-charge needs to have it. So that's my two cents, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Jones?
Just a question, I have a question on the motion. Did we just put the certified Connecticut municipal clerk into the motion, or did we put both?
I think it's both, I have both.
Put the whole paragraph back.
Is there anybody in the office that currently has these certifications?
Oh, myself and my deputy has IIMC, so.
So is the timeframe, the logical timeframe of three years or five years?
Finding someone to, to get a, to get a clerk's certification, certainly, you could get it in three years. Four would be better, of course, or even five.
Along with, but Counsel Parker is mentioning of just extending these years a little bit longer, just to give a little more time? Does that seem like a reasonable?
I do, I, I do, I think, I, I really value what you've said, and it, you know, it makes sense, it does. It's, it's an honest opinion that you're giving me, and I appreciate it, so, but I, I think what Counsel Parker added is, is really doable.
Is to, so to take these three to five and make them five to six?
Five to six, five for one and six for the other.
And six for the other. So I would like to make a motion, then, to take, just extend the timeframes. I think it's, I think, I agree with Counsel Parker that it's worthwhile to have these, so that everybody's up to training, especially if it's something that people already have in your office. But I think the, just extend the time.
Point of information, would that be a contrary amended motion?
No, he's amending the amendment. So the amendment is to, the amendment is to add this paragraph back with the numbers, three years and?
But it's contrary to what she said.
No, he's just amending her amendment to change from three and five to five and six.
That's actually what you suggested. Oh, he made the amendment.
I'll second the amendment.
That's correct.
I'll second it.
Am I correct?
Yeah, you're amending Counsel Boardland's.
Amending Counsel Boardland, just extending the time, just to give the person more, more time.
Well, including the entire paragraph.
Right.
I'm agreeing with Counsel Boardland that we, we should have certifications, and I'm agreeing with Counsel Parker's idea that, you know, it's a good idea to have them, and I'm kind of sensing what I'm hearing is that it's, employment standards have changed, and it's a little tougher to get people, but if we give a little bit more time, then that might be okay.
So who's the second on that?
That would be Parker.
Parker, okay. So I got an amendment to the amendment by Counsel Jones, a second by Counsel Parker.
Getting the Robert rules out.
That's right. All right. And Counsel McBride?
I just have a question. I, I have real concerns that we're adding cost to the budget six weeks into the year. So is this position really needed at this point in time? I mean, sincerely, because it's a hundred, probably a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars that, we're six weeks in the year.
I know, I, I realize the imposition I'm putting you in as a counsel, and I know how important it is that you protect the taxpayers and what they pay for, but I'm not gonna be here, so somebody's got to do it. I'm, I'm not announcing, but before the end of the year, I will be resigning, I have to put that out there.
You don't have to.
So this is a potential, planning strategy? I see, that helps explain things.
To make sure that things are taken care of, but it has to be somebody that can do it.
Thank you. And Tom Andrews, where will these funds come from?
Ultimately, it'll end up being a fourth quarter transfer for whatever's needed that's not covered in the budget.
Okay.
Sometimes things work out, you know, we've seen it before.
And this is the first new ad for this fiscal year? Just a question, because I know last year you came back, Anna, do you happen to recall how many new hires we had last year? Not in the budget, but throughout the year? I mean, just a rough, I, I know you probably can't remember, just, was it two maybe, or four?
In the whole town, how many new people?
Yeah, how many new hires, new positions, not replacements?
Oh, oh. New awarded through the council last year, I think was two? I think it was two last year.
Okay, that's all my question, again, that, that's my concern, I appreciate the work you do and the detail, I just have concerns over increasing the budget, but thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Franco.
Thank you. I apologize that you felt a need to have to say that here publicly at our meeting, that you really didn't have to.
You can't do things behind doors, so.
I know, it's a personal issue that you do not have to discuss here. I personally, let me rephrase, speaking for myself, instead of personally, I would say, is there a way to put steps in here for pay, that if you get, and I understand what's being mentioned here as we don't want to put too much burden on people and trying to get people, and because it is so desperately hard right now. Is there a way to put steps in here that if you achieve it, then your pay could go up? Otherwise, like, maybe your pay stays sort of in a certain range, and if you get a certification, it moves up, and then if it goes to a different certification, it goes up, and maybe that's quite a good incentive, usually for people to want to get certified, and then it covers a lot of other issues that are, you know? So I personally, or shall I say, I speak for myself, I would like to make it so that you have a certain, maybe, years to achieve this, but also, is there a possibility of steps?
I would say it's not in our current compensation plan, how we handle it for non-union, and logistically, I'm trying to think through what that would look like, because, let's say you start somebody at sixty-five. There's cost of living. say you start somebody at sixty-five. There's cost of living per year and things like that, so where do you say, okay, we're going to cap you at this amount over X number of years, and then when you get it, we'll jump you up? It just seems a little, I'm not sure it would be good culturally for employee to say, okay, you're going to stay here, you see everybody else around you getting a raise, maybe it's not possible to get it before three years, because whatever the classes are, but you're stuck because of that until you get X. Um, it might be a little difficult to implement. I understand the idea of what you're saying. Um, we have ranges, not steps, in the non-union salary, so it makes it a little tough to say, okay, you'll reach X after this amount, because it's not clean cut, like a union contract, where you can say, okay, I know in five years, you'll be at step six, so we'll, we'll just say up till three, and then you'll jump to, or something like that. It's a range, it's very fluid.
Well, that, that's what I'm, you put down a range here. I mean, when you hit the, the max, you're, you're at the max, correct?
Hopefully.
Um, so I don't know if we would, I don't know if I can't speak for anybody else, but I'm not sure if we want somebody to be at eighty, almost eighty-three thousand dollars without any kind of certification.
Well, I, I, I can answer that. I can't imagine that we would hire someone at eighty thousand dollars if they didn't have the, the certifications already coming in.
Well, agreed.
You know, once you push this out, that's what you, you'll be getting, people that are already certified.
Typically, for me, my suggestion is for the non-union wages or ranges, budget in the middle. Like, when we're putting numbers, no more at the bottom, because that's not the world.
Well, that's the thing. If you come in certified, maybe you start higher up, but if you're not certified, you're starting down at sixty-five.
Well, that's fair. It sounded to me like you were saying, kind of, just hold them where they are for a long period of time, and then, okay.
No, I'm just sort of saying steps. Like, if you're at sixty-five, and then you get your certification, then you, you get bumped up further in, in your pay, maybe quicker than waiting for your three percent a year or so. You know what I mean? Maybe there's an incentive to go to.
Better talk to the town manager.
That's what I'm asking about this. Because if you come in with an associate's degree, with maybe some of these experience, but not in a clerk's position, and knowing the municipal clerk stuff, you're not going to start off mid-range?
It just depends what experience you bring to the table. Maybe you have fifteen years of clerk experience, but no sir.
Right.
Right.
You might be coming in kind of higher. So it's kind of hard to judge without knowing, um, the particular person. It almost seems like this might be something that's like a bonus, but then it takes away the incentive, because maybe you don't need the bonus, let's say, and you just keep getting your increases. So I'm just not sure how to structure it within that range.
And, and if that position hit that certification, the clerk could request, you know, I have the ability to give higher wages, so it could be a request to me to reward that at the time. They make a justification for why, they just think it deserves more funding.
But not, but don't write it into the.
Right.
It might be a little hard to administer, but that's what I was thinking, from a bonus perspective, of something extra, but there's less bite to the incentive when you do it that way, so.
Yeah, I think it's a road we wouldn't want to go down.
Yeah, it wouldn't be my.
I just know from experience that usually when you give a carrot such as that, people will definitely absolutely go for that. And instead of being harsh to the point of, like, if you don't get it in a certain amount of years, there's a potential for you to be fired. Usually, you give the carrot, and people usually will take it.
Yes. I think the carrot is working in the town of Groton. I really do. I really do. It's a great place to work. It is. She'll tell you.
Good. All right. Council Bordelone?
Um, yeah. So, for me, I guess, you know, I looked at teachers, well, let's start even smaller, dispatchers at the police department. They're required, it says in the contract, that they have to complete the certification by a certain time. So it's not unreasonable. I mean, we don't want to, I don't want to use that word, so let me hear, we don't want to lower our standard to meet what we feel is becoming the standard. So I think we're meeting that. I mean, dispatchers are said, you have to meet this requirement by a certain time, or else. It's, Ledger has it in theirs, you know, New London has it in theirs, and Groton has it in theirs. Also, let's keep in mind, teachers make around the salary with a four-year degree, some less than this starting out. So I, I get, I caution in a supervisor position that we start saying, just an associate's. I'm not degrading anyone who has an associate's, but I think it should be an associate's moving towards a bachelor's, or maybe their role in a bachelor program while they're in. We, we should ante up a little bit here. We're talking about eighty-two thousand dollars, with full benefits, town jobs, and having to pass some tests. Well, you know, we need the certifications. Either you want, it's a structure, or you don't. So for me, I feel it needs to be in there. I can support if we have to moving, like, with Council Parker moving that, but I think that then you could have an employee that worked here for three years, and then they leave, and, because they, oh, that certification thing's coming up, then they might hop. I'm not saying they will, but people, from an HR perspective, it, it could happen. So when you, when you make a strong contract that is diverse, and I know that diversity, equity, inclusion is one thing that I very advocate for, but I just also don't want to lose the fact that there are very qualified people that could meet that standard by, without lowering it. So for me, I like the standard. I like the three to five. I think that's cut, I think that's dry. I like the fact that it's sixty-five to eighty-two. I can support Council Franco's, um, idea of this, this, the, the staggered thing, and I, but unfortunately, the way this is structured, I don't know how it would fit in here. But I do think we'd be very remiss to, to not think of our educators in our district that are making the salary, and have a bachelor's and a master's degree, and are certified. You know what I mean? And, and nurses, you know, so that people have to do this. This is a supervisor position. And as Council McBride stated, we're, we're doing this in the middle of a non-budgetary time. We're talking about a hundred and twenty, a hundred fifty thousand dollars of taxpayers' money. Don't you want the best qualified? And I, I'm all about inclusion. So I almost feel like we need more time on this document. I do think it's, I, I actually think it should come back, and we should really relook at it. But I think the certifications, the stuff that was taken out, needs to come back. I mean, this is a supervisor position over vital records, and as Betsy stated, that she may be leaving, we need someone that's going to come in knowing the ropes. So, and our elected person is, rotates. I mean, we've had Betsy for a long time. The next elected person could come in for two years and leave, four years and leave. We, we, we might not get the same grace. So knowing that, we want a strong replacement of that. That, that's my concern.
And I guess, just food for thought for everyone, is really the crux of the conversation, is it necessary to be successful to have these certs? And then, like, it, it does on the person you're getting, or is it possible that people with lived and worked experience could be just as successful? So it's kind of a judgment call for everybody to weigh in on. And that's some of the conversation that we've started to have when looking at that. Because that, it is a big change, and we recognize that, and we did talk through that.
Thank you, Council Jacom.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Manager Burt, can you refresh my memory on, with charter, on, um, the absence of the clerk? Then I also want to bring up the hierarchy. Is it your, your number two, Dawn, or?
Well, don't, please don't bring names in.
Okay, sorry. Um, so I'm just trying to figure out, you know, if this position's needed in my mind, because now I'm going back on, I'm starting to consider, too, like, it's, it's not in the budget right now, so I'm starting to consider it that way. Um, how that would work if, you know, in, in her absence or vacancy, it would, somebody would move up, and the position would open up underneath. And I think that person has been training under, uh, the current town clerk, and should be in certified.
It'd be a council decision.
Yeah, the coun, if, if my position becomes vacant, the council appoints. It has to be same-party affiliation. Uh, and depending on when the vacancy occurs, is when the person has to run for reelection, so.
And what I'm hearing is.
If I fell off earth tomorrow, they'd be on the ballot in November.
Hopefully you would not. And from what I'm hearing, most of your staff is, is certified, correct?
No, they're not all certified. But they could be, very quickly. It's just huge, talk about budget.
Yep. Thank you.
Council Gieske?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, my concern happens to rely in the new state statutes of early voting. Um, I know on January first, twenty twenty-four, um, there are certain parameters in early voting, and I, I, I want to express that, that saying, if we have an extra person in our town clerk's office, um, I understand the budget concern. Um, Council McBride, that's a great point, but for presidential primaries happening in, don't quote me on that, but they are, we're going to have to have a full staff ready to go, and I would rather, you know, figure out the financial aspects, uh, later, and make sure that our citizens in our town have, the, the town staff is properly, uh, equipped, um, to, uh, handle that new task that is coming down. Um, Madam Clerk, could you explain, you know, temporary vision of what you see a supervisory clerk doing when it comes to early voting, if anything, or is that going to be left to your deputies or assistant town clerks?
Well, um, the way that the statute's written, um, we, we have early vote, voting. We have, it's thirty days, uh, before the election absentee ballots are available. That's early voting. So presidential elections, uh, talked to John, he was there during COVID. Uh, yeah, we had stacks and stacks. I hope that doesn't happen again, where our, where our funds are, are used to send ballots to people that didn't ask for them. So, uh, anyhow, my role in early voting is, is nothing, nothing with that statute. That's all on the registrar voters. They're going to have to designate, uh, you know, the parameters as, as guidelines of the statute. I will continue to do absentee ballots, and we've changed the, uh, the Secretary of State, uh, two years ago, uh, because of COVID, but we, but then last year, it became permanent, that, uh, it's not due to sickness, it's just sickness. And so that was described, uh, to us in detail, that it could be, you're afraid of getting sick, your friend is sick, your daughter is sick, you know, it's sickness, any kind of sickness. So I cannot see how anyone who doesn't want to vote by absentee, um, they'll be able to vote early voting, I believe, two weeks before the election, or is it one week? I can't remember.
It, it varies, it varies on, I believe it's.
For the presidential.
I believe it, it's a couple days to start, and then it's.
It's staggering.
It's staggered. Like, it's like, it's a few days, and it's like, maybe different for presidential, so.
Right. So, but they can vote thirty days before. A lot of people don't like to vote thirty days in advance, because they've changed their mind. But there's a law that protects that. If you vote by absentee and you change your mind, you can ask for that ballot up until ten o'clock on election day. Nobody likes to hear that. The registrar doesn't like to hear it.
Uh, just a point of information. If I wanted to put another motion down, did it just have this, like, redone, come back? There's no room to put it down with the amendments that are down, is that correct?
There are some motions that can be laid on top of amendments, like motions to table or, there's, there's some motions that you can make that can supersede amendments on the floor, but, I mean, I don't have a list of those in front of me, but there are some motions you can make.
Yeah.
But generally, yes, we would have to resolve all these amendments, and then go.
I guess, I guess my point of question would be, if, would it make sense to table this to, with that delay, like, if you brought this back, so that you could kind of figure out where you want to set that hierarchy in this job description? Because if we pick it apart, like, that's my.
I understand your question.
Like, I, I need more time to, to fine-tune it.
The coun, the council can decide whether we have the time, we, we have the information and, and to make a decision tonight. If you want to make a motion to table, you could do that, and the council could decide whether they.
Postpone. Or come. Postpone.
Motion to postpone, you could do that, and then the council can decide.
Specific date.
Um, I guess I'll make a motion to postpone, I, I guess, the town manager, when, would you think, I mean, I don't want to delay it too far, but I just want to correct all those things. I mean, it's hard to make a motion and amendment on each thing back and forth like this.
It'd probably be the, I would say, I just checked the upcoming agendas. We're booked for the next, uh, cow unless something drops off, so it'll probably be the first cow of September, which would be. The eleventh, Monday, the eleventh.
So I guess I, I'm, I'm asking for, to postpone this to September eleventh, is that what you said? Um, just so that we can work on this a little bit more, and, and bring it back with, you know, a lot of different, anyway, today, sorry.
Okay. Let me just make sure we're doing this correctly.
Postpone to what day? I'm sorry?
September eleventh.
And then.
Yep. So, motion to postpone supersedes an amend motion. Okay, you need a second?
I'll second.
Okay. I've got a motion to postpone, Council Bordelone, uh, second by Council McBride.
So we're now voting on the postponement?
It is debated. Yeah. Council Bordelone, we're only talking about the postponement.
Uh, on the postponement, I, I think it would be germane to postpone, not because the quality's not here, it's no disrespect to the work that you put in. It is hard up here in a council meeting to go back and forth, the three or five, or should it be a bachelor's and associates, or, you know, we, we could, we have to, we're in a tough position to throw fifty million amendments up here, versus having some of this reworked and figure out what we can do and what parameters, with it being a supervisor position, knowing that Betsy is possibly leaving. Um, I, I just think that we want a strong ask in this document, is my thought. But it's no disrespect to the work that you guys have done. And that's it.
Council Parker?
Um, I am not in favor of postponing. I believe most of us have reviewed and just made some minor changes. We've spent some time discussing this, and I feel that we can vote on this this evening. Thank you.
Council Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm comfortable with the amendments that are on the floor and are not in favor of postponing.
Thank you. Council Bordelone?
Um, if I end up voting this down again, it's not for not wanting the position, or um, any disrespect to the work that you guys done. It's just for simplicity, I, you can't tweak it i- i- in this, this platform in the way that I feel I should. Um, so that would be my reason for voting it down or abstaining. Thank you.
Council McBride?
Yeah, I'm in favor of the position to move it forward, but I don't think a few more weeks will make a big difference, considering it sounds like we have several months before any changes will be made. So I'm in favor of postponing it for the sake of clarity, to make sure what we finally approve is accurate. Thank you.
Council Franco?
I, um, I'll be opposed to postponing. I think you've worked on this, and I think you will need to advertise, go through your hiring process, and to get somebody in, and then start getting them trained in the, in a very short period of time. So I do think that there is a necessity here to move quickly on the action. Thank you.
Okay. See no further discussion. I'll call for votes. Postpone. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Uh, fails two in favor, Bordelone, McBride, seven oppose, zero abstaining. Okay. So we're on the second amended motion. This is, uh, to add back the paragraph on page sixty-one, licenses and certifications. However, uh, where it says three years, change that to five, and where it says five years, change it to six. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Okay. That carries six in favor, three opposed, Bordelone, Melendez, Gieske, zero abstaining. So now we go to the main motion. Uh, so it's the document that you have in front of you, adding a paragraph as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Here's unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. Onto update manager of information technology services position.
I'll read it for you.
Thank you.
Make a motion to recommend.
Make a motion to recommend a resolution to approve the updated title of Director of Information Technology, the updated job description for the position of Director of Information Technology, and the updated maximum wage range for the position ranged to $120,000. I still move.
Second.
Moved by Parker, seconded by Jacome.
Just real quick, before we move into it, just want to say, this is an extremely critical position, and we're under a very tight timeline. I've got to have a, we're going to need a post tomorrow, basically, through the guidance for tonight, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, as I mentioned, when we're looking at a upcoming vacancy, which is coming up very soon, we're looking at the existing job, how does it fit into the scope of the needs, and what is appropriate as we're going back out to market, so to speak? So this position was reviewed, and you'll see in the red writing, a lot of the aspects of what the calling is for this position is a director-level function. And there's a small update to the salary range, just putting that top range up a little bit to be realistic, to give a little room to grow, similar to some of the conversations we've had prior for posting in this day and age, and with making sure we're having an appropriate range for candidates. So this is upgrading or updating, however you would like to look at it, the manager of information technology position to a director level, and moving the top from 111,312 to 120, and that's how it would be advertised.
Thank you. Council Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Maybe this is town manager Burt or director Green. I know we're having issues trying to just fill some of our positions, and some of it is a salary issues. We're not necessarily as competitive as we should be in the market to grab people. Is this making us competitive in the market?
I'd say it seems appropriate for this region. I wouldn't call it a slam dunk, though. Yeah, so it's not so high that you're definitely getting somebody, but we were hopeful.
Helpful. Does this also sort of begin a reflection of the other director positions that are in the town that need to be, that need to be adjusted at some point?
Well, you know, we've, if you recall, some of my reports, we're starting under, I think the kickoff's tomorrow for the salary study. So there's going to be a salary study for non-union and the supervisors' union that hopefully will be done by the end of the year.
I just know it's difficult always having to come in front of us and try to get it. I just want to make sure that you're giving us an accurate number, reflecting on sort of where you're trying to move and what you're trying to do.
We certainly hope so.
Okay, okay.
It's hard to tell in the market, though.
We're trying to be reasonable and balanced.
Yeah, yeah. We don't want to, we're not trying to jump, you know, too high or off the bat.
Right, we're not throwing things out of whack. Okay.
Now, if we get nobody, we'll come back.
Okay. I just want you to be having a number that you think is fair.
No, I agree, and it's a fine balance, because we're on the verge of taking a look at everyone. So yes, we want to keep it in line. We're going to have to look at how the other positions in the non-union range are stacked amongst each other. But for this area, I think it's a fair ask, and looking across, yes, there's a range, and we've had this discussion before, we're not looking at Phil County to be competitive. So this seems a fair ask at this point in time.
So is this, that's my question, when does the salary review starts?
Well, the kickoff's tomorrow, and the hope is to have it by November at the latest date.
Yeah, we're going to be working over the next few months, and...
I just, I hope, you know, this is one of those issues that we can incorporate into the next budget.
Right.
Along with, as Council McBride says, you know, these things should be done at budget times. Is that enough, do we have enough time to sort of come up with these new numbers and...
That would be the hope, yes, if everything goes well, yeah.
Okay, okay.
And this one would have waited till then, it just became time critical.
Council Jacome?
Thank you, Mayor. On page 72, Director, just says, there's no other, I'm surprised there's no other certifications or licenses that the director would require?
I did inquire on that, and I think this field is a little bit different than some of the other fields, where it's not necessarily a certain degree, let's say, or you might have a certification in one kind of computer language, for lack of a better word, that might become obsolete in a short time. So I think it's more about your experience, and about keeping up with professional learning as you go along. But I did have that conversation as well, and ask about it.
That was kind of my only concern about that, is, you know, I understand, like, the concept of having, you know, C++ and having those kind of certifications, but I agree. All right, thank you.
Council Franco?
Thank you. My husband works in IT, and I will tell you that a director at Yale Hospital will make a lot more than this. So I do know the challenges that you are going to be facing, so I wish you the best of luck with this. I will support this, and probably eventually, maybe you'll be back. So thank you.
Council McBride?
I just have a quick kind of clarification. It says here, reports to Director of Administrative Services. Is that old data?
Yes, my fault. I missed that for an update.
No, I just wanted to make sure that changed.
Thank you. So yes, we'll incorporate the updates that it's reporting to the town manager. Thanks.
The manager kind of bounced around some, you know, position titles changed, and it bounced around a little bit.
Okay. See no further discussion, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries unanimously nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I've got a motion to adjourn by Council Parker, seconded by Council Borlon.
Good night.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Here adjourned unanimously at 9:40.[1761.75]